So I want to welcome everyone to a beginning of our regular meeting of Larkspur City Council. My name is Kevin Haroff and I'm serving this year as the city's mayor. Tonight's meeting is Wednesday, July 21st, and we are starting pretty much on time at 6:32 in the evening. Like all of the meetings that we've been doing for the last many months. This is a meeting that we conducted only by video and telephone conference, teleconference. Information for the public to access and participate in the meeting is on the agenda, which is itself available on our, our city's website. So with that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Vice Mayor Homer.
Here.
Mayor Hara.
And I am here as well, and we are convened, so that's good. And what we're going to do tonight, as we try to do as often as we can, is do the pledge of allegiance. And I see the flag waving proudly in the background here. So if we could start with that. My pledge.
Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. United States. To their public. For which it stands.
One nation.
Nations.
Liberty.
Justice. For all. Thank you very much. Always a good way to start. So that completes our first agenda item, and we'll move on to our second agenda item, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council regarding matters that are not on the agenda or that are listed on the consent calendar. If you would like to take the opportunity to speak at this time, we would appreciate it. But I would also ask that if you do wish to give comments that you identify yourself by name and where you live, and please keep your comments to less than three minutes. So with, with that, Allison, I think we have some written public comments that have come in, but I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you. Yes, the council received one written comment from the Marin Park Residence Council. Our first comment tonight is from Joe Jennings.
Go ahead, Joe.
Hi, Kevin. This is Joe Jennings from the Commons Foundation. I just wanted to raise to the council's awareness. As you know, we're partnered with the city to raise the funds and for the city to build the new library at Rose Lane, the first phase of which is a 5,000 square foot, $5 million project. And the city has stated that there are no funds available for the capital project, so we're raising it all privately. Since we started this process, we've raised approximately one over $1.4 million, and we're tracking on our goal. But recently, the state of California passed SB 129, which is the 2021-22 Budget Act that includes $439 million for library infrastructure projects. And it's a matching grant program for a maximum of $10 million per library. It is a dollar for dollar match, and the state librarian has the option to waive hardship situations if it can be demonstrated. What we would urge is that the city council agendas this item so that we can discuss a possible strategy for the city and the Commons Foundation, any other nonprofits that have raised funds for building a new library, and any other interested parties to work together to prepare a grant application and pool the financial resources so that we can double our money, if possible, working with the state to get the library built sooner and at a lower cost to the taxpayers in Larkspur. In addition, the Commons Foundation, if there's a need for it, would be willing to pay for the grant writer to work directly with the city to prepare the grant. So I know you all can't comment on it, but that's, that's just the news from the Commons Foundation. Thank you.
Good. No, thank, thank you, Joe, and appreciate your, your calling in from what I'm sure is a long distance. Anyone else on the, on the, on the public comment list?
Our next comment is Kevin Carroll.
Okay, Kevin.
Good evening. Dear Kevin Carroll, I live at Marin Mobile Home Park here in Larkspur. Dear council members, according to the 2010 U.S. Census, 44.5% of the population of Larkspur live in rental housing. We are asking that you include renting rental housing tenants in the Larkspur Housing Steering Committee. At the May 19th City Council meeting, you appointed Mayor Haroff and Councilmember Gabe Paulson to join two planning commission members in a housing steering committee. What percentage of those committee members are renters? The staff report states that the committee will assist in developing the draft housing element update and provide advisory review and input for the objective design and development standards, inclusionary housing, and nexus fee policies, and other housing-related matters as needed, as well as providing review and feedback on other housing-related policies and codes. Staff further stated there are a variety of housing-related policy projects that will require amendments to the general plan and municipal codes over the next one to two years, including the state mandated housing element updates. Some of these policy issues are driven by recent housing legislation and funding to address the statewide housing crisis, as well as any additional legislation under consideration that would mandate further changes and updates to local ordinances. Staff anticipates that a steering committee comprised of both council members and planning commissioners can help guide the refinement of draft policies and programs and the many housing-related matters to be addressed. How will the needs of 44 and a half percent of the residents who are runners be represented if they are only allowed to participate after, quote, "the refinement of the draft policies and programs for the many housing-related matters to be discussed"? I've included in my written comments that are on the agenda a link to a Sausalito staff report that shows how Sausalito is including renters, houseboat owners, citizens with special needs, housing advocates, families with young children, people experiencing homelessness, and people who would like to move to stay in Sausalito, and others, they are adding to their housing element committee. We are asking for fair representation of the 44 and a half percent of the resident housing tenants in Larkspur as members of the housing steering committee, signed by the Marin Park Residence Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good. Well, thanks. Allison, anyone else in the queue?
Our next commenter is identified as manager on the Zoom call.
Okay. And I see manager with a hand up, but I'm not seeing anything else.
Okay, manager, you had yourself unmuted. I'll ask you to unmute again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about the delay there. This is Frank Chazza, the manager at the Left Bank Rosary, and I would just like to request that you add to the agenda and maybe that we vote on an extension of the Left Bank Ward Street parklet, independent from the other town parklets, mainly the Magnolia Street parklets. I would like to say that the Left Bank Ward Street parklet will not interfere with the Magnolia Street ADA project as the parklet is not in the designated construction zone and has two sparking spaces up Ward Street. Left Bank Ward Street parklet does not block or interfere with any other Larkspur businesses. The Left Bank Ward Street parklet brings 100-plus additional consumers to the Left Bank in Larkspur per week, which benefits all Larkspur businesses. The Left Bank Ward Street parklet is a tribute to Larkspur. It costs upwards of $50,000 and celebrates the entire town and has classic paintings throughout it. During these trying times, we should not be tearing down businesses' hard work in places where residents can gather and celebrate safely. Instead, we should be building and strengthening our community. I urge you to show patience and care for the safety of our residents and businesses. Please vote on extending the permit of the Left Bank Ward Street parklet through 2022 at some point in the near future. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for those comments. Appreciate it very much. Anyone else in the public comment list?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or any emails, public comments. And there is no further public comment.
Okay. Well, good. Well, thank you all for that.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to say that all three of those public comments I thought were right on point, and I think all three of those deserve to be agendized in the near future. So I would like to ask the manager to take that into consideration when we're making the next agenda, whether it's the next one or two, but.
So we'll, we'll, we'll sort out the agenda. I just, I just want to make sure we're not crossing any lines about commenting on what has been expressed during the public comment period, but, and I see our city manager is raising his hand.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to address a few of the.
Yeah.
So with respect to the first speaker, I think the appropriate thing is to initially refer the matter to the ad hoc committee that's working on the library and community center issues. With all respect to Mr. Jennings, I actually think the city council meeting would be a difficult place to plot out the strategy for applying for a grant. I think that should probably be a roll-up-your-sleeves kind of meeting where we, we talk about it, and then we can eventually bring something to the council once we kind of know what we're doing. The second speaker, Mr. Carroll, if the council, as I understand it, is intent with forming the housing committee, steering committee, housing steering committee's intent is to hold public forum meetings as you did for the general plan, and so all stakeholders will be welcome and able to participate and engage the housing element steering committee during the meeting. The committee itself are the representatives of the two bodies that will actually vote on the housing element when it's ultimately ready for that purpose. And then lastly, certainly with respect to the parklets, if it's the council's wish, I think it would be more appropriate to bring the entirety of all parklets back rather than one parklet, but I would be happy to do that at the next agenda. If that's the desire of the council.
I would second Scott's suggestion. So if you need to, who would like to read, re-discuss parklets, you have my vote on that.
Okay. So that's a, with that objection, I think we have a suggestion by members of the council that we bring the issue of parklets back in a more, more appropriate time than tonight. So thanks for that. Any, any, anyone else on the council? Again, this is not a time to really comment on the substance of what's been expressed during the public comment process. With that, I think we're finished with agenda item number two. We'll move to agenda item number three, which is presentations and proclamations. There are none on the list. So we will move to agenda item number four, which is the consent calendar. These are matters that are typically considered to be routine and typically enacted by a single vote at the council. If there are any members of the council that would like to take any of the items on the consent calendar off for separate consideration, please let me know, and we'll also ask the same of the public. Seeing no requests from the council, Allison, do we have anybody from the public that would like to request separate consideration of any items on the consent calendar?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no public comment.
Okay. Well, with that, I will ask for a motion from one of the council members to approve the consent calendar.
So.
Don't, don't all stand up at once. Who was that?
I'll start.
So was that Gabe and then the second by Dan?
Yes.
Good. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Let's have a vote.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Homer.
Yes.
Mayor Hara.
Yes. The motion is approved, and that concludes that item on the agenda. We'll move on to the next item, which is our city manager's oral report. So pass it on to our city manager, Dan Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items for you this evening. The first is a reminder for the council and the public that there will only be one council meeting in August, and that meeting will be on the third Wednesday, one regular meeting, and that'll be on the third Wednesday of August, which is the 18th. We'll actually be bringing a number of items particularly related to the American Rescue Plan money, some of the infrastructure plans and challenges that the city's facing in the next year, and some other state monies that have become available. So it should be a pretty busy meeting for us, and it sounds like we'll have parklets back on that agenda as well. The other thing I wanted to let folks know is, you know, we're, we're back doing our road paving through our bonds from Measure B, and Rice Lane, which is the small lane that runs parallel to Magnolia in the downtown and then starts right behind City Hall, is scheduled for pavement. And the work around City Hall is occurring on Monday and Tuesday of next week. So if you're thinking you might want to be coming down to the library or to City Hall in general on Monday and Tuesday, we probably suggest to do it electronically if you can, because it's going to be kind of a busy construction zone. We'll be open, but, you know, if you can, I'd probably try to wait till Wednesday or Thursday to, to come down to City Hall. So with that, pass it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. And I wondered if maybe you could just kind of comment on the status of where we are with the Bonner Bridge. We had a closure for about a week, which some people were surprised to see, but I don't think most people were, and it seems to be moving along quite well.
So, you know, a lot of folks were asking us why nothing was happening for a while, and those who've been with us a while on the bridge project know that we periodically have to stop work because of two endangered species, and so we were waiting for that window to reopen where we're allowed to do work. So we resumed a few weeks ago on our construction plan, and last week was one of two remaining closures that we planned from the beginning of the project, and we periodically reminded the public they're going to take place. Can encourage folks to come to our website where they can find links to the Bonner Bridge project site so they can keep up to date on this information. But really pleased to say things are going very well, and in fact, the closure had been scheduled to go all seven days. It actually only took four and a half days for them to get the work done and reopen the bridge. So they're working at a very good pace, trying to be as conscientious as possible as the impacts they're having on the community. We're actually looking now to see if the next closure of the bridge can, as much of it as possible can be done on a weekend so that it's less disruptive of folks trying to get to the school. So we, that closure is in a few months, and there'll be more information as we get closer to it in our project windows. Things are moving along, and, you know, hopefully next year we can, we can finally celebrate it being done.
Looking forward to that with great interest. So that was, that was my only question. Any other questions from members of the council for our city manager?
Just a quick one, Dan, in reference to your comment about the commons, are we having one of our subcommittee meetings next week? Is maybe we can put that on the subcommittee of the commons. Maybe we can put that on our subcommittee meeting agenda.
I think offline, we can figure out if we're having that meeting and.
Okay.
Put, put it on if you'd like.
Thanks.
So.
Good. Any other comments or questions from the council? Anything from the public?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no public comment.
Good. Well, thank you, Dan, as always. Good report. Let's turn to item number six, which is council members' oral reports and comments. Are there any members of the city council that want to take this opportunity to write a report on what they've been up to lately? And I see Catherine Way raising her hand. Go ahead.
I have two things to bring up. League of California Cities, which is now called CalCities, annual conference was postponed last year, but they're having it this year in Sacramento, September 22nd through the 24th. If any of my other council members are interested in going, I've registered. So I'm hoping to be able to come if circumstances allow, but I encourage the rest of the council to consider attending at least some of the days if possible since it was missed last year. This year it's in Sacramento, so I'll be submitting that I could be our representative, and that will have to go through channels for us to agree to that when we have the vote. Second thing is, as a member of the Central Marin Fire Council, I'd like to remind everyone that if you can see this, Central Marin evacuated police tags are available at the fire stations and at the police station on Doerty. If everybody can see that, these are designed so that you keep it handy, and if you are self-evacuating for a wildfire or other emergencies, or you're ordered to evacuate, you can put this somewhere where the police can see it as they are sweeping neighborhoods, and has a little tag on the top where you can attach it to either your mailbox or your door someplace prominent so that they don't waste time trying to see if your home is occupied if you have evacuated. And remember that the evacuation for wildland fire, should that ever come to us, is a high-low siren by the police. It's like a, I'm not going to try to demonstrate it, but it's a high-pitched and a low-pitched, a high-low sound. So these are available. Pick them up for your neighborhood. I went to the police station today on Doerty, and they have a huge box of them, so they're available. If you can pass them out to some of your neighbors and explain it, it's also helpful. That's all I have to say.
Great. Anyone else? I see Councilmember Paulson with his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So three items to report, kind of continuing what Councilmember Way was talking about. With fire season, a lot of us are really aware and concerned about evacuation. So the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency has now said that the Zone Haven evacuation system is operational, and if anyone wants to learn more about it, just Google Zone Haven and Marin, and it's essentially, you know, a high-tech system that divides our neighborhoods into boundaries that have to do with fire and, you know, different residential groups and streets and traffic. And that's a really important piece, and come the fall of a zone awareness day. So everyone on this meeting and, you know, residents, just, just as Catherine was talking about the tags, we really are aware of that safety issue and that high priority, so that's, that's coming soon. The Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Group is also getting ready for drills later in the year, and, you know, everybody is really thinking and concerned about doing the home inspections and the vegetation management. And again, just as Catherine's saying, really encourage people to get that awareness. And then the last point is the League of California League of Cities had a great talk about public safety, and given that we've, you know, discussed equity and race and, you know, the statute and so forth, I really have been trying to track our own measures and steps, and right now there are three bills in Sacramento. One is preventing rubber bullets and pepper spray and peaceful demonstrations. Another is trying to qualify peace officers better by training and age. And the last is, is, you know, allowing decertification of police officers. So those three bills are all there, and the league has taken a position, you know, I think Larkspur's position, my personal position, really is to increase the, the social justice and the fairness, and Chief Mike Norton, as well as Vallejo's chief, Shawnee Williams, were there to comment. It was a great discussion. I really hope we make some progress with the legislation. And, and that's, and the one last thing is I also support discussion of the parklets. I missed that meeting, and I, as a chamber member, and knowing that COVID is still not over, and, you know, concerned about the businesses and, you know, some of the positive resident comments, I was hoping we could have a little more discussion about that. So I appreciate if that's agendaized. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else on the council with a report?
I got nothing today.
Yeah, that was Scott. Vice Mayor Homer, anything?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. Well, good. Well, to kind of continue a theme, we are in the, we are in the fire season, and I was very, very happy to have our inspection conducted by the contractor, well, I guess, working with PG&E to come and take a look at our perimeter of our home, make some very positive suggestions that we'll follow up on. When, when those folks come knocking on your door, please welcome them and take seriously the advice that they are, they are giving. We've had a number of different MCE clean energy meetings lately, both at the executive level and the board level. But a lot of the focus really is on uncertainties associated with for MCE power utilization and the challenges that that, that presents with the grid and managing the availability of electricity to everyone in our community and across the state. So I just wanted to mention, mention that is something that people are really concerned about. I think some of the projections about the likelihood or frequency of public safety power shut-offs has kind of gone up a little bit, so we should anticipate that, all of us in the community, and make sure that we are all prepared for that eventualities as we are moving into the height of the fire season. There is a, there are significant risks that we'll be experiencing, some power shut-offs, and people need to be, need to be prepared for that. And I guess that's the only thing I really wanted to emphasize, you know, take care, be safe, make sure your house is safe and protected, and make sure that you anticipate the, the, the likelihood of losing power for some periods of time, for whatever reason that may come along. That's it. So unless anybody else on the council has a comment, if there's anybody in the public that want to, want to say anything about what we've had to share tonight?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no public comment.
Okay, good. Then we'll close that item up, and we will move on to the next item, which are public hearings. And I think we have a couple. First one is item number 7.1, which is introducing a wave first reading of ordinance 1053, which would amend chapter 6.16 prohibiting smoking in public places, places of employment, and other areas. This would be an amendment to the Larkspur Municipal Code. So with that, could we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Hara, and members of the city council. Before each night is an ordinance amending various sections of the city's smoking regulations held in chapter 6.16 of the Larkspur Municipal Code, which was last amended in 2011 by ordinance 978. The proposed ordinance would require 100% of multi-unit residences be smoke-free within one year of adoption of the ordinance, where currently multi-unit residences can designate up to 100%, but no less than 80% of units are smoke-free. Another change removes the exemption for smoking cannabis for medical purposes, which is a measure that several other Marin communities have taken after finding individuals requiring medical cannabis have other ingestion options available to them that do not produce smoke. Other changes incorporated in this ordinance include minor amendments to bring terms and definitions into conformance with current state law prohibiting smoking within 20 feet of a building or road construction crew and allowing for enforcement by administrative citation. The proposed ordinance amendments would bring our regulations in line with Corin Madara and Dan and Selmo, who make up the other member agencies of the Central Marin Police Authority. It would also improve Larkspur's grade in California's American Lung Association State of Tobacco Control Annual Report, where Larkspur is currently among five municipalities in the county to receive a lower B grade in our smoke-free housing regulations. The agencies that received an A grade have already implemented 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing. The city council also received public comment at their May 19th meeting urging adoption of stronger smoke-free housing policies. Additionally, nine letters in support of adoption of the ordinance were received in advance of a meeting and are linked in the online agenda packet. It's recommended that the council open a public hearing and receive public comments, then motions introduced in way first reading of ordinance 1053, amending chapter 6.16. Then motion to introduce and wave first reading of ordinance ten fifty-three, amending chapter six point one-six of the Larkspur Municipal Code. Thank you, and I'm a goal for any questions.
Okay, thank, thank you, Allison. Um, before we uh, open the public hearing to, to the public, are there any questions or comments from the council? Let's see Catherine Way has her hand up.
Allison, that was an excellent report. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we all agree with that. Anything else from the council? Otherwise, I think we'll open the public hearing and open it up to uh, the public. We do have some written comments as, as our, uh, as Allison mentioned. Um, but if there are others who want to provide uh, verbal comments tonight, now's the opportunity to do that.
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comments. And there is no public comment. I apologize, there is public comment. Our first commenter is Pam Granger.
Okay, Pam?
Good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Uh, Pam Granger, Chair of Smoke Free Marin Tobacco Coalition. Just wanted to applaud you for considering this update. Uh, we're in the, the era of what we know now that we wished we'd known then. And as early adopters, many of the communities in Marin um, led the way and as a consequence uh, haven't been, uh, haven't had an opportunity to benefit from what we know now that we wish we'd known then. What we found is that um, based on complaints and um, information from our neighboring communities, I happen to live in Petaluma, so I'm also real familiar with the um, Sonoma County ordinances that uh, implementation is easy. Smoke Free Marin Coalition has assisted, as has the county, with uh, implementation. Um, they're readily available to uh, make sure that uh, anybody's uh, in any of the landlords are updated uh, along the way. And I think if you uh, look at the information we provided, most of the community, most of the uh, multi-unit housing units uh, in the community are already smoke-free because it makes good business sense, even if you said forget public health. Uh, turnaround is faster, it costs less, and you can get insurance rebates. So there's many reasons uh, to applaud the change to a hundred percent. And we urge you and thank you for your uh, um, consideration this evening. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it very much. Anyone else in the, in the public queue?
Looking for any additional raised hands. And our next comment is Anita Ranzetti.
Anita?
Hi, everyone. I'll keep it really short because I did write um, an email. But I most recently, I'm a volunteer for the Smoke Free Marin Coalition. And as I mentioned in my email, I have um, a lot of experience with things related to smoking. Um, but for this particular issue, um, my, my main thing is just to say that the more complicated in ordinances, the tougher it is for neighbors, for the law enforcement, for the county, people who handle the complaints, which um, most recently was me before the current folks. Um, I had to tackle these complaints in my role. Um, that working with um, tobacco control. And a lot of them were related to cannabis and a lot of people were extremely frustrated if they didn't have um, eighty percent, if they had eighty percent instead of a hundred percent smoke-free multi-unit housing. And I'd have to explain to them, well, this is what happened and it was a, you know, there were these ordinances passed. But at this point, like the rest of Marin at this point, it would be wonderful if you would please pass this and protect families, children, pets, everybody from secondhand smoke, the drifting smoke that can cause them health problems. And I, I do, of all people, I do totally feel for people who are addicted to smoking. But as someone who's also had her own medical marijuana card, I know that there are other ways to get, say, medical marijuana. And there is a, a lot more help nowadays for people who want to quit smoking. So I'm glad to um, at the smoke free Marin um, dot org website, for example, we have a lot of different things that people can use, such as nicotine replacement or therapy or, you know, talk lines where they can call whenever they feel the urge to smoke and tons of free materials. But I just wanted to again point out that this is not something that's punitive for smokers. This is something that where we're all just trying to help people who are living in multi-unit housing and breathing the same air as their neighbors to have the right to have clean air. And I, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anita. We appreciate your, your, your input. Anyone else uh, from the public?
Looking for any additional raised hands. And there's no further public comment.
Okay. Um, well, I guess with that, we'll kind of close the public hearing on this item and uh, open it back up to the council for any other comments, questions, um, and uh, hopefully a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance ten fifty-three. And I see Councilmember Candell.
Thank you. Uh, I, I have a question. Um, so uh, a- as you know, I, I advocate for medical cannabis uh, patients. Uh, and uh, while it is true that there are, you can have uh, edibles, things like that, they all affect people differently. And some people find that uh, smoking cannabis actually helps them better than any other type of ingesting. And I see the tension here where you don't want the secondhand smoke to affect other people, but you want to respect somebody's right to uh, use the medicine of their choice. Uh, the question I have is vaping of cannabis is a way to ingest cannabis where you get the benefits of smoking, but it doesn't cause secondhand smoke. Basically, what happens is it heats cannabis at a lower temperature so that you get the benefits of the cannabis, but yet it doesn't, you're not just burning the cannabis, so it doesn't cause the smoke, it doesn't cause the smell, and it shouldn't affect other people. And my question is, why was vaping included in this ordinance? For anyone, staff, uh, the uh, council, a- anybody, I just don't understand.
Yeah, I can uh, try to answer that question. Uh, vaping or electronic smoking devices were included in the definition of smoking uh, because I believe there are current studies or concern uh, amongst the public that the smoke produced by electronic smoking devices uh, would still amount to a level of secondhand smoke disturbance that would be uh, uh, influential on neighboring property owners.
Okay. And Allison, is that, is that treatment of that issue consistent with what we see our neighboring communities doing in terms of their ordinances?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that county agencies have also included electronic smoking devices uh, in their definition of smoking.
So by doing that, we're just, we're, we're basically going along with what our, our neighbors are doing.
Right, but, but going along with somebody else doesn't mean you're necessarily doing the right thing. So.
No, I, that's fair, fair, fair enough. I just want to make sure that was, that was clearly understood.
So, so, so I, I guess my thoughts, uh, and I'm happy to hear discussion on this issue. But my thoughts is if we were able to modify that uh, to take out vaping so that people who had medical cannabis and were able to vape with a way so that doesn't affect their neighbors, uh, I would be in support of this ordinance if we were in favor of, of making that modification. Um, but, but again, I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on that. That, that's my, my initial reaction.
So.
Uh, Councilmember Way, go ahead.
I have a question and um, my ignorance about vaping will be showing, but if it, listening to what you're saying, Scott, if someone is vaping a cannabis, it's not producing a smoke, so their neighbors wouldn't be affected by any type of of smoke odor anyway. So it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any notification that they were via, in violation of an ordinance if, if nobody knew.
Y- yeah, yes, but the, my, my concern is that it specifically lists vaping as something that's prohibited. Uh, so that it just, I, I don't agree with the philosophy of it's okay because nobody will catch you. So right, it's illegal and, yeah, I, I, I would rather get it right and say, yes, you can't do things that affect your neighbors. Uh, and these things are bad and this is okay. And in my experience, vaping falls on the okay side of the line. And I'd be curious if, if, if other people, you know, felt differently, why? I, I would love to hear, hear comments.
So maybe to clarify then what the administrative enforcement is, would, would an individual who needed to vape for their, their particular marijuana consumption, would that fall under an administrative citations um, ability to, to uh, to look at that individually? Dan, I don't know if that's, because the, the administrative citation would come to a manager, I assume.
The, the way this ordinance tends to get enforced now, and I think would continue going forward, is that uh, when an individual contacts us and they have a complaint about somebody violating the ordinance, we actually refer them to, to Smoke Free Marin. Um, and through that office, they tend to intervene and talk to all parties and explain the ordinance. And frankly, in my time with this process, I can't think of one in Larkspur where they weren't able to resolve the issue there. And there's no citation, there's no punitive action, there's education, explanation and resolution. Um, I think if I had brought Chief Norton to this meeting, I think he told me once in one of the communities, they actually had to be brought in to issue a citation because they had someone who wasn't willing to go along with that uh, process and come to that resolution. So um, I can't really answer that question entirely for you, Catherine, because uh, we haven't gotten to that point, but generally I think the answer is that the police would come in if we had someone who wasn't willing to come into compliance or compromise. Um, it's a complaint-driven ordinance. We're not out looking for people violating it. It's so that people have a means to bring a, a first smoke from Marin and then the police in if necessary to stop a behavior. I hope that sort of addressed.
It did. I just, you know, enforce, these are often complaint-based, as you say. So if they're having, if they're not significant complaints, then it's uh, more of an educational discussion.
Yeah, I saw Councilmember Paulson had, had your hand up.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, two questions, uh, one, one for Scott and one for um, maybe uh, uh, Dan or Allison. Um, Scott, I just want to clarify, are you proposing to have an allowance for vaping for people with a, you know, medical marijuana card or need, or just to allow vaping in general? Um, and then for Allison or Dan, I, I know this is probably the case, but I, I asked earlier. Um, you know, since I work a lot with Marin Park, does this include the mobile home parks or is this only the uh, sort of um, attached, you know, um, you know, uh, multi-tenant units?
Uh, you want me to go first on that? Uh, Mr. Mayor, you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead, although it might be quicker if uh, our uh, city manager addresses that second question first.
Uh, I actually had to ask the attorney, Skywood, or so I'm going to give him credit that he pointed out to me that uh, Marin Park is not multifamily housing, so the units themselves aren't subject to the ordinance, but the common areas probably are as are common areas in a lot of uh, developments. Um, and then um, I know I'll turn it to Councilmember Candell. I did want to let the mayor and the council know. There are several people here from Smoke Free Marin who might be able to speak to the vaping issue if that's helpful after uh, Councilmember Candell addresses Councilor Paulson.
Yeah, I think that'd be, that'd be terrific. Um, Scott, you wanted to try?
Sure. So, so my, my suggestion uh, is just for the uh, cannabis part of this. And it's, it's in the ordinance, it specifically says vaping, that we just strike out vaping. Oh, uh, and uh, the reason being that uh, back a bunch of years ago, people had medical marijuana cards. Now, because cannabis is recreational, a lot of medical patients don't go through the step of getting a cannabis card, they just go get recreational cannabis, but use it for medical purposes. So I think, you know, it, it would be, uh, it, it wouldn't make sense to require somebody to get a card uh, so they could use cannabis in their own home, in my opinion. Uh, so my suggestion is really just striking out the, the vaping portion of, for, under cannabis to allow people to vape cannabis in their homes if, if that's their, their choice for medicine.
Okay. So let's, let's come back to that in, in a moment and let uh, maybe some of the folks that are in the public who have some special information that they can provide, if there are any raised hands.
Yes, I'm gonna unmute Bob Perry uh, from Marin Health and Human Services.
Go ahead, Bob.
And council members, uh, I, I just sent you, Allison, some information uh, related to the, the current topic on the vaping. And vaping actually is dangerous. Uh, and there's some science to go with that. And we've uh, I know we've had these discussions in a number of the communities throughout Marin as we uh, changed the definitions of what smoking is, to include the vaping. Um, you know, vaping, uh, if you allow it in a unit, the people could go out on their balcony, they could be by a window that's real close to a neighbor. So that danger from, uh, it's not a water vapor, there's particles in the vapor. Uh, it's an aerosol and there's uh, chemicals that uh, could be ingested secondhand. And so that's why most of the communities, we have had this discussion and that's why it is in the definition, because there are dangers. And I I sent that information to Allison. I don't want to go into detail on it, but it is not a harmless vapor and it is dangerous if somebody is ingesting the secondhand uh, particles that are uh, vaped by a neighbor.
Thank, thank you, Bob. Anyone else um, out there who's got a hand up?
We do have several additional raised hands. Uh, if you'd like me to just go down the line, our first additional commenter is Anita Ranzetti.
You might want to, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, say you're reopening the.
Yeah, that, I, I was just thinking of that. So let, let's, let's uh, do that. I thought we kind of close that, but let's reopen the public hearing aspect of this in order to allow members of the public to uh, to inform us about their views. So that, that they, that public hearing is reopened.
Hi, this is Anita Ranzetti. I'm just going to mention that there is new research um, as recent as two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one showing that the vapor that is exhaled by somebody who is um, vaping cannabis can and does transfer to somebody else. It can hurt another person. Um, and I can send some articles, the science articles. There are also articles on like Tobacco-Free California and other websites, but these are direct scholarly articles that show that the shared air with somebody that is vaping can be dangerous um, to that person who is breathing it in. It, in the sense, um, they're able to measure it with the particulates and everything. So this is another one of those situations where what we're coming to learn now, um, if we take vaping uh, off of the table in terms of this, we're going to have to be back at the table in a couple of years revisiting it. There's a reason why the state and other communities have also disallowed vaping of cannabis in their secondhand smoke ordinances. So I would, I'll send something um, to the city clerk as well. I'll send a couple of articles just to get the ball rolling, but that research is out there. It's just not something that the public necessarily knows at this point.
Thanks, Anita. Um, who, who else in the public since we've got the public hearing opened up again? See Kevin, Kevin Carroll, yeah.
Um, first off, I, I have really no opinion on marijuana one way or the other. I tried it when I was younger and I don't, I don't care for it one way or the other, doesn't bother me. Uh, and I think legalization is fine too, but I was a smoker for uh, thirty-some years. Uh, quit about twenty years ago and I've become quite sensitive now uh, to both cigarette smoke and marijuana smoke. And I can tell when someone gets into my taxi cab who's been smoking either, and doesn't matter if it's vape or not vape, they still reek of it and it really bothers me. Um, I have no choice about breathing. There's no alternative to doing it. Um, for medical marijuana users and regular marijuana users, there are edibles for their pain and suffering or enjoyment. So I think my breathing should take precedence. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, anyone else in the public? Well, we've got it open again. See Pam Granger's got her hand, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, I went to circle around with uh, some additional information. The Marin Grand Jury advised against vaping cannabis. I think it was twenty-five or twenty-six times in a report they did uh, a couple of years ago. I'm just throw that out there. Um, but one of the issues about setting aside vaping uh, just for cannabis throws a real monkey wrench into enforcement. Um, so now we've got, uh, we're only going to vape cannabis and now we've got, well, maybe we'll vape our uh, Candy Crunch E-Sig and maybe, you know, makes it very difficult for enforcement. It's also difficult for individuals who have quit um, to be e- exposed. Uh, probably some people would um, hide in the closet and try and be real surreptitious. Uh, but if they uh, go out on their balcony, um, now you've got the kids next door that are watching. It's just, it, it adds to the issue of uh, um, enforcement. And so to. And so to make an exception for one kind of vaping creates a problem for other kinds of vaping. And two points had been made before. That's not an exception that's found to have merit in across the state as ordinances have been updated. So I'm sensitive to Councilmember Kendall's concern for the people for whom he advocates. But one person's relief shouldn't come at the expense of another person's health is a viewpoint that's been expressed to us by multi-unit housing residents over and over. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Anyone else in the public? Kelly Jones?
Yes, thank you, council members and staff. Just briefly, I wanted to speak on the opposite side of this issue and thanks, Scott, for bringing up this point. I was for many years the medical cannabis user and now, as Scott says, I don't bother to get a card because it's not necessary and it's an extra cost. And as a medical cannabis user, I have been very concerned about the potential negative impacts of, of smoking marijuana, which is what, you know, people usually used to do. I, I have not smoked marijuana and, and I've only vaped marijuana or had edibles for many years now because I'm concerned about health issues. But I personally studied the research on the impacts of marijuana smoke. Over many years, I would check back to make sure, to see if there were new findings. There may well be some new findings that I haven't seen as people have mentioned about the impact of vaping. But I want to say, my conclusion for my health was that there was no evidence. There was contradictory evidence about the impact of marijuana on health. And the net finding, as far as I was concerned, that, that there was a health impact that perhaps balanced any type of negative impact from smoke or whatever. They didn't, I've never seen evidence that there's a carcinogenic effect from smoking marijuana and so on. So I just want to say that there are reasons to think that secondhand smoke, they might detect some particulates or some type of elements of it. But I, I would want to see the full studies. I don't believe them because I know that research is framed by a common public view of things and, you know, the mainstream view is very conservative still on marijuana. So thank you very much. I appreciate you taking my comment.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Anyone else in the public?
Well, Kelsey Fernandez.
Kelsey?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. So I don't have much to add. The, the science is there that secondhand aerosol is harmful. The science is very clear that secondhand marijuana smoke is harmful. And I just wanted to remind the council of the speakers last time that this subject came up. It sounds like the youth aren't here today, but I was listening in at the last meeting and I was really quite moved by the personal testimony that I heard from young people during lockdown that live in multi-unit housing that had no choice but to breathe other people's secondhand aerosol and secondhand smoke, knowing that it was harmful to their health. So I hope that this council will use an abundance of caution, particularly when we're talking about health impacts on young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Anyone else with their hand up? I see one more.
Sarah Soriano.
Hello, thank you, city council members and staff for your time. My name is Sarah Soriano. And I'm speaking as a community member. And I work with youth, youth in Marin County. And I've actually had the opportunity to work with youth and hear about their concerns. And there are two students that I work with who submitted emails, Annika Dawn and Emily Gallegos, who have told me about their personal experiences, living in multi-unit housing, one of them. And their concern, having a good, good understanding about the harmful effects of regular cigarette secondhand smoke as well as vaping aerosol secondhand smoke. And I have an article by the American Lung Association that says, it's titled, "Don't Be Fooled: E-Cigarette Aerosol Is Not Harmless for Kids." But if it's not harmful for kids, it's not, it's harm, it's not harmless for adults either. So the American Lung Association states that the e-cigarette emissions can contain harmful chemicals, including nicotine, which is a neurotoxin, and volatile organic compounds. Children are particularly vulnerable because of their developing lungs and nicotine is always harmful to adolescent brain development. The article continues to state that the perceptions of aerosol and, and the harmlessness of aerosol is very prevalent. About forty percent of the population in the United States believes that it's not harmful or causes little harm. But that is not the truth. The American Lung Association has been conducting studies and in this article, they state the question, "What's good for your lungs?" Clean, healthy air, period. According to the study, clean air free of both smoke and e-cigarette aerosol remains the standard to protect health. And the American Lung Association wholeheartedly agrees. They say that's why we continue our work to help smokers quit tobacco and to educate the public about the realities of tobacco use, including e-cigarettes, and the importance of smoke-free spaces, all smoke and vapor. In fact, now we're.
Sarah, if you could kind of bring it to a conclusion, because we've been going on for about three minutes now.
Absolutely, yeah. So that's all I'd like to say is that there are studies and our youth are very concerned in Marin County. About fifteen that we work with this past year have, have been involved in, in this issue. So thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. We appreciate it. Anyone else while we have the, the public hearing still open?
Looking for any additional raised hands or any email public comment. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, good. Well, in that case, I think we can now conclude the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the council for comment and discussion. Just a reminder, what is before us is consideration and we've done the public hearing and potentially have a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance ten fifty-three unless the council wishes to provide other direction. Any comments from the council members?
Vice Mayor Helmer moves the staff recommendation.
I'd like to comment before we vote on it.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the members of the public for their comments. Please don't take this conversation to mean that we are not interested in the health of children or people in, in multi-unit buildings. The situation is, from my experience, okay, that certain patients do need to smoke cannabis. And certain patients choose to vape because it doesn't produce the negative side effects. They can't use edibles because it affects people differently. And I would not like to, I would not feel comfortable passing a regulation prohibiting people from taking medicine in their own homes. I would, I, I do not believe that vapor has any negative effects on people around as far as smell, especially if you're in another unit. If people in the council do not agree with me, I'd be happy to pass this matter. We could all get in a room and I would vape cannabis and nobody would even know. Okay, I was on an airplane, somebody was vaping cannabis in the seat next to me. It has no smell whatsoever. So if anybody has any doubt, I would be happy to, to do an experiment with our city council so everyone could have some firsthand experience on what we're actually talking about here. Otherwise, I would move that we just strike the vaping out of the ordinance, the vaping language out of the ordinance.
So right, so right now, we do actually have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And unless that motion doesn't pass, I think, first of all, we'd, I'd need a second for that if we have one. If not, then we can move on to, to other considerations. But we do have a motion on the table. And I see Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask the vice mayor if there can be a little more discussion. I'm interested in moving this tonight, but I also feel that there was enough discussion where I'd, I'd at least like to frame, you know, the issue as I see it. And maybe that'll be helpful to the other council members.
Vice Mayor Helmer here. I would like my motion to stand. You can talk as long as you want, but I'm, I'm ready to move the staff recommendation.
Yeah, as a, as a procedural matter, I think we have a motion on the table. If no one seconds it, then that's one thing, but we do have a motion on the table and I would be looking for a second.
Yeah, having, having heard all of the discussion, I agree with Vice Mayor Helmer that I will second this motion.
Okay.
My chair just.
That's okay. So we have a motion and we now have a second, so I think we can take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kendall.
Oh, I'm missing something, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
I think discussion is allowed after the motion and the second. We'll just call the vote when discussion is not.
No, if, if anyone has anything further they want to say about this, feel, feel free. Okay, Councilmember Paulson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I just, you know, again, I'm really trying to keep an open mind and, and what I've heard is a good bit of anecdotal evidence from, you know, various speakers and including Mr. Curry and Mr. Kendall and from the other side, some of the students. But, you know, while this conversation is going on, I also did go online and, and looked up, you know, what the Surgeon General has said, which I find fairly definitive and what the American Lung Association say. And, you know, anecdotes aside, there, there does seem to be evidence that, you know, that for either tobacco or for marijuana, whether you smell it or don't smell it, there can be damage. And, you know, as a council member, one of my primary concerns is protection of kids. And that's why I'm in Marin Youth Healthy Partnerships and so forth. I really believe that adults should have all the freedoms and, and so forth. But I, I do believe that, that just from a glance of, of the evidence in ten or fifteen minutes, there's a great amount of credible evidence that there can be damage. So I just wanted to bring that back into the discussion from, from my perception. And I, I do think, Scott, the one point earlier, if this were under the condition of someone having a card showing a need, not, not a blanket, that might be one thing. But I still think we are weighing the, the needs of, you know, someone with, you know, a medical issue who might be able to find another way to do it outside of the perimeter of their living arrangement versus all the public that has, you know, no recourse. So, you know, I'm leaning, you know, towards the, the ordinance for that reason.
Okay, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Helmer for reminding me that we can still have a little bit more conversation. Is there anybody else on the council that wants to take this opportunity before we go to a vote?
I, I would just say to, to Councilmember Paulson, I, I respect that. And we're, the reason we're on the council is because everybody has different opinions and I don't expect everybody to agree to me. Yeah, you know, agree with me when I, I say something. I just, my personal view is that if somebody does have a medical condition and this is what helps their medical condition, I would feel it would be an injustice to prevent them from using their medicine in their own home. I don't know what, what that does to this person. If you tell this person, you know, yes, you know, you have cancer and it helps you to vape cannabis, go down to the local bus stop, you know, or, or, you know, go, I, I don't know what you tell this person, go, go to a, a local park, you know, to, to smoke your medicine four times a day. It just doesn't feel right to me. It's, it's, it's so much we were talking earlier about just balancing, you know, the, the different harms or the different benefits. And, you know, in my opinion, you know, somebody's right to, to, to take their medicine outweighs the, the minimal harm that it, that it could possibly do to people living in, in an apartment next door. But again, I respect people's, you know, differences of opinion and, you know, I'm comfortable taking a vote.
So is there anyone else on the council that want to, want to chime in here before we go to a vote? Seeing none?
I'll call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Please do, thank you. Allison, can we go do a roll call?
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Helmer?
Yes.
Mayor Harrow?
Yes. So with that, the motion is approved. And again, this is just introduction and waving first reading, so this, this will come back. But we do have a motion and the motion has been approved. So with that, we will conclude agenda item seven point one and move on to seven point two. Where we're going to start talking about climate issues. And the first item as part of agenda item seven point two is getting some direction for staff with respect to the potential crafting of a vision statement for the city's climate action plan. This is a matter that has come up before and I think it's time for some discussion and if we could have a staff report, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This public hearing, we put into two parts because the public workshop that you're going to conduct in part A affects the decision, I think, on how you want to deal with part B. So part A is a discussion about whether to have a vision statement or some sort of vision comment in the climate action plan. And you had asked that we schedule that as a public workshop. So in a public workshop format, the council typically allows for more free-flowing discussion among members of the council and members of the community. At the conclusion of the public workshop, you'll be making some sort of decision or direction of staff with respect to the issues outlined in the staff report, which I'll discuss briefly in a minute. And those affect part B where we're going to move into the actual discussion of whether you want to adopt the climate action plan tonight with whatever decision you make from part A. So for this part, as is noted in the staff report, you received a request to consider adding a vision statement to the climate action plan that you're in the process of updating. And a group submitted, a group of residents submitted to you their suggestion on what that preface, that vision statement should be. As staff has noted in the, in the report, there is no prescribed format for a climate action plan by state law. Climate action plans and documents similar to it evolved out of a need for government agencies at various levels to summarize the ways in which they were going to comply with different directives from the state and other agencies with respect to complying with climate objectives and laws to achieve climate improvement goals. And so most, many of the agencies in the state call that document a climate action plan. That's what Larkspur's chosen to do. Larkspur participates with other Marin agencies in a cooperative effort to do a lot of climate action collaboratively. And one of the things that we do is craft the climate action plan in a general format that each of the agencies adopt. There isn't really a lot of precedent to have a vision comment or a vision statement in the document. So staff really was not able to provide you with a comparative analysis of options in this regard. We did provide you with what was done in Fairfax where an appointed advisory committee of the council in Fairfax crafted a preface to its climate action plan. That's relatively comparative to what the residents from Larkspur submitted to you. We also provided you with what is sort of more along the lines of what would be considered a traditional climate sorry, vision statement, if you were more inclined to do a, an actual vision statement. But this is really your opportunity to have that discussion, decide if you want to place any of this type of narrative into the document and if so, what that should be. And if you choose to use the language that's before you, we can fold it in by direction to part B where you'll consider the climate action plan. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you and the council.
And, and just, just for clarification, you know, we've had some public input on, on this issue that has evolved, I think, as we've been having a discussion. And, and just, just for clarification, you know, we've had some public input on, on this issue that has evolved, I think, as we've been having a discussion. And it, it sounds like the input that we've received seems to endorse the strategy that Fairfax has, has taken. Am I missing anything on that?
Well, I guess we should be clear. We've taken and incorporated a number of comments that relate to the climate.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
What you have now before you is a request from a resident representing, per his email, other residents where they've suggested that you incorporate this language into the document. I am telling you that the, the language presented is relatively comparable to the language in the Fairfax document. That's the only document that has language similar to what was submitted. So.
Right, but I guess maybe it's just a linguistic issue because the, what, what ended up with Fairfax, as I understand, is just, it's a preface to what ends up in the cap as opposed to something that may sound more than that in terms of a vision statement. And my, my understanding is that folks are, are happy with that, that approach.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna leave that.
Okay, I'll leave that to the public, right?
I would conclude, by the way, I did forget to mention, there is one aspect in the last sentence of the item submitted from the, from Mr. Muller and his group that might, might not be well received by people who are advocating for a new library and community center because it sort of implies you're making a commitment to a particular operation in that facility. And you may at least want to consider whether that sentence belongs in the document.
Okay. And can you point us to what exactly that sentence is?
Let me call that backup, Mr. Mayor. I think the last sentence in the submittal says something to the effect of there will be a new climate action center in the.
So that's, that it's, it's that same sentence. Okay.
I simply called that one out. That may be one the council considers worthy of particular discussion.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, thanks for that, that clarification. So that was, that was my question. I'll, I'll send it back to the, to the council and like, like the city manager said, this is a workshop. So we can have kind of a more free flowing conversation about how to address this issue. So let's start with members of the council. And I see Councilmember Paulson with his hand up.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to just first express appreciation for the group that has put this together. And, you know, I've, I've spoken with them and, you know, thought about the issues a good bit. And I think the intention, as I understand it, is to, you know, to try to make this something that, that may generate more enthusiasm and more comprehension, you know, about the issue at stake. So with that, I, I do endorse it. I guess the, the technical matter is, you know, where to put it in the document. My understanding from city staff is that it, it does not detract or add to their direction. So they already know what will be required of them, you know, you know, as, as a matter of, of, you know, procedure. And, and so with that, I, I think it's, it's worth, you know, looking maybe at some details. But overall, I, I appreciate the, the attempt to, you know, try to, to make this more than a dry technical document. So thank you.
Yeah, no, but, but it's appreciated. Anyone else on the council?
Dan Helmer here. I think it's valuable to have community effort to put a frame on something that we're going to be asking the community to take part in. And as long as it's not creating additional risk for the city, I think it's a good strategy. I think it's a, an effective way to add a community voice to what we're trying to do is send a message to everybody that we need to work together. So I, I think as much as we can to create a unifying effort and a unifying message. I think we, we should do everything we can to create a unanimity about this. Those are my comments.
Good note. I appreciate that. And I'm just, just curious if you had any thought about the specific item that the city manager brought up about the, the reference to the library and community center.
I don't. I don't oppose having a programmatic identification of, of the issue and a I just don't, I don't think committing to a facility or an element in the facility, I think it's premature. I think having that as a, a ha- having the, and maybe, maybe this can go into the city's cap itself. Looking for ways in which, and places in which the community can work with the city to bring focus to this for the community. I think that's worthwhile, but I, maybe some other words to describe it short of a, a commitment that creates an expectation for the new facility when we haven't yet even defined what it is. Maybe a little early. And I don't, I don't want to discourage the interest in adding this to the to the learning that needs to go on at, at the learning center. So don't confuse my message. I just think we need to do it as we build consensus around what needs to take place.
Well, that, and that's why I, I appreciate that. And that's why I asked for you to make a comment about that. Because that's kind of what I thought you would say. Anybody else on the council? Catherine?
Yes. So for the first question, do we would like to see a vision statement in part of our climate action plan? I, I think it's a good idea. We're working off of one that's been submitted by a group of residents through David Muller. I, I like this particular description. I think it needs a little wordsmithing, frankly. There's a lot of, a, a little bit of redundant wording in it. If we can take some time to do that before it's an official document, I think that would be fine. I'm, for, for instance, I don't think we need the line, the 900 new residential units completed near the Larkspur Ferry. I, I think it needs to be broader and more of a, of a philosophical vision in many ways than looking at things that are that specific like that. I'm, I would find that that might be misleading to people. So things like that, I'd like to see us delete as, as well as the original comment about the library and community center. Because those are very specific things as opposed to, in my view, a vision is the, what you're philosophically hoping to reach for. So my comments on that, but I, I, I think what David has put together here looks real, looks real nice. It's, it's a big stretch for a lot of things, but that's what a vision statement should be, right? So how do you want to handle this? Do you want us to board smith things now? Or do you want to have this returned to staff?
Is, is that a question for me? I, I, I think what, what we're doing that right now is just basically getting everybody an opportunity to, to provide their reactions to it. I, I don't think we need to engage in a wordsmithing exercise tonight. But I'd like to hear from other members of the council and then, and then go to the public for their perspectives as well.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up on one comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Way made with, she used the word delete. And I, and she also used the word or to the effect of saying re, reframe or exchange words. I think, I think learning for, if, for example, if there's not consensus to put something specific in, in the statement, going to the next level of generalized description might be important. For example, with respect to the housing description, there was a number too specific probably, but I think the concept of effi- efficient land use around resource areas. And maybe there's, there are places where we can find appropriate words to describe the concept. And this would also apply to the request that we be very specific with the co- commons project and the city's community facility parcel. I think we could be more general that these, as a concept, this should be a, an effective message in the programming of the facility, for example. So I, I think finding different words to describe the concept may be an effective approach. And I think staff could certainly manage this.
Yeah, I think those are, those, those points are well taken. Anyone else on the council?
I'm going to reserve my comments though. After public comment, I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, this is a, this is a workshop, so it's not a hearing. You know, unless anybody else on the council wants to take this opportunity, we'll, we'll open it up to the public.
Our first comment will come from Robin Muller.
Okay, hi, Robin.
All right, actually, this is David Muller speaking.
Yeah, no, right, okay.
She's actually in Spain, so you'll get me. So, good evening, Mayor Harrow and, and council members. I am commenting tonight on behalf of the Larkspur Climate Group, which has been referenced earlier. That's now a group of seventeen Larkspur and Greenbree residents. And that group is joined together to encourage and assist Larkspur and its residents in identifying and implementing any, I'm sorry, implementing high impact actions in response to our worsening climate emergency. And it's already been mentioned, we provided some comments on this specific item via email dated July 19th. We greatly appreciate the council considering including some kind of forward looking story in the cap. And really appreciate the encouraging and supportive comments I've heard during this discussion. As we noted in our June 24th email to the council and key staff, it was never our intent that our proposed story serve as a formal vision statement for the cap. And we don't think it's necessary for the cap to have a traditional style vision statement now. What our intent was to have, to kind of paint a positive and appealing picture of where the actions in the cap might lead. And our purpose for doing this was really to help engage the community in taking those actions. Give them an appealing picture that takes all those incremental actions and where could this all lead? We certainly favor the cap, including a forward looking story. The idea of making it be a preface is fine. And we think the story that we provided should generally fill this purpose. It's fine with us to make modifications. If, if people are concerned about the word vision in its title, just take it out. That's fine. Other edits are, are okay. A couple of the items that have been mentioned here, the specific reference to a, a climate center and the, in the new commons, that can be taken out. It can just be replaced within the Larkspur commons. Easy to do the reference to the specific 900. It could be replaced with new housing units, the new housing units that have been built. So we're fine with those changes. The idea was to get this compelling vision of what the future could look like. I, I will mention that several people who have read this in the reviewing have responded with comments like, I want to live there. So I think it, it says that clearly this is an appealing picture that can engage the public. And if, if staff is asked to make changes on this, we'd be happy to review those changes or work with staff. And again, really appreciate what I'm hearing is general support to have some kind of compelling forward looking story like this as part of the cap. It seems that's where it would do the most good. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank, thanks for that and appreciate very much your, your perspective on how this might be written in a way that would accomplish a number of different calls and reflect some of the other challenges that we're having on housing and then other matters. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. So I don't want to be too formal about this, but if, if there's anybody else in the public, I've seen Ken Strong sand up.
Yeah. Hi, this is Ken Strong. I live in Greenbree. And I concur wholeheartedly with the, the tenor of the council's members' comments so far about the, this. I think that calling it a vision statement got everybody sidetracked for a while there. This is, was clearly not a vision statement in the corporate or organization sense. I have some experience with those and this didn't comply with, with what you'd have in something like that. And for Larkspur, that might, you know, require discussions of housing and transportation and some other things that are beyond the scope of the climate action plan and the like. So I, but I do think that whether you call it a forward looking narrative or you just talk about it as being Larkspur in 2030, I think it does cr- capture the imagination that the cap is trying to convey as far as what we can have if we are able to implement these things in the city over the next 10 years. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else with their hand up? Kelly?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Kelly Jones again. And I am a Larkspur resident. And I, you know, I just wanted to add my voice to those that you've heard that, you know, I'm not a member of the group that, that form, you know, the, the, that gave this suggestion. But on reading it over, I think it's really helpful to have that positive vision. We all know how, you know, potentially difficult these changes are that over time that we're, we're trying to make. And, and I just find it's really helpful to look at the positive side of where we will be. And I, I think that that's the feeling I'm getting from the comments of the council members so far. I really thank you for considering putting this in. And I think it's a valuable addition to find a way to use it to communicate the possible future that we're talking about. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. And we have another hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I'm on Magnolia right now. I'm actually funny enough. I'm sorry for the background noise. I think everyone is in some sort of agreement about this. And sorry if I speak for anyone who hasn't spoken yet. That this statement is, is important for the cap. And I, I am in agree, in agreement with that. I am part of the Larkspur Climate Group. It seems as if Councilmember Way had said something about potentially revising the initially proposed statement, which I also agree with. And if there is an opportunity for public comments to be sent in with perhaps language that could be adopted into that, I would love that opportunity as well and open to that. Sorry, that is my final statement for this topic. Thank you.
No, well, thank you. And we didn't hear any background noise as far as that's concerned. So good job. Appreciate that. And we have a next comment.
Marilyn Price.
Well, hi, and I'm so pleased with everything I'm hearing. My name is Marilyn Price. I live in Mill Valley. I started a climate, a countywide climate emergency resolution committee with a goal of having every Marin city and county adopt a climate emergency resolution. And my main reason for doing this was to awake our residents to the emergency nature of our current situation and the need for all to act now. And as you know, it's getting worse almost day by day. With this thought in mind, as I read the proposed visionary story to your cap, I thought what a wonderful way to alert our residents of this emergency. I've learned in many of the environmental webinars I watch that telling a story is a powerful way to encourage people to change their behavior. I do hope you do adopt a visionary story and certainly use it in any public announcement of your cap to inspire your residents to not only support the cap, but to individually help to make the story come true. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Marilyn. And just, just as an observation, I think we still have additional items on the agenda related to this general topic, including a potential declaration of climate emergency for later consideration. So we'll get to that. Anyone else on this matter presently? And I see there's a telephone.
James, James Holmes, Larkspur. The proposed statement is, is well intentioned and contains some good materials, especially in the last three paragraphs. I'm not sure a vision statement is really necessary, given that the city is following a uniform template for countywide consistency. I'm not sure a vision statement is really necessary, given that the city is following a uniform template for countywide consistency. It doesn't include one. Ideally, the plan itself should should speak for itself regarding what it envisions. But the problem here that I see is the proposed vision statement goes far beyond the scope of the plan. If you do write a vision statement, then it should be confined to illustrating the desired results of the plan and should focus on those things that the plan can accomplish with respect to Larkspur. For example, the proposed paragraph regarding the result of a tree planting program is excellent and relates directly to the plan. On the other hand, pardon me, the reference to a one-half reduction in traffic just isn't feasible, given traffic from outside the city. And the reference to nine hundred units at Larkspur Landing is not only unrelated to the plan, but it was specifically rejected by Larkspur citizens. And the idea of a Larkspur local power grid is not part of the plan and seems overly ambitious for a city struggling just to provide basic longstanding amenities like reopening the library and that lacks funds to retrofit City Hall. The focus on walking and and biking doesn't fully seem to account for the situation of those who have who can do neither well and the references to substantial alterations to housing could certainly seem daunting to those who who lack the funds and and other opportunities to to redo their houses. In general, you'll note that the Fairfax preface that inspired this proposal is much broader and more general than the proposed Larkspur version. It's also more realistic in some respects. For instance, it acknowledges the need for an improved state power grid in connection with electrification, while the proposed Larkspur statement posits a Larkspur power grid to fill the gap. It's also unclear to me how a vision statement relates to jives with the general plan. The idea that some statement or or resolution in connection with the plan that expresses the city's aspirations, to the extent that they aren't covered in the plan itself, which they probably should be, may be worthwhile. But not a statement that could be seen as perhaps overly pie in the sky and in any event, far beyond the scope of the actual plan. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Good. Anyone else? Max Perry.
Hello, Mayor Harof and members of the Larkspur City Council. Apologies for the for the honking behind me. I live in Mill Valley, but I'm actually in Larkspur over at Bonner Shopping Center. So like a previous commenter, wanted to to apologize for any background noise. Just a quick word of thanks for considering taking bold climate action. A number of cities, including Mill Valley and Tiburon and others, are about to embark on a similar process. And you guys are being watched to see what you do and and what we've seen is is really gratifying. I think that Larkspur has has a chance to really be a leader when it comes to taking bold climate action. And I just wanted to to concur with some of the comments previously made by by David Muller and others. And thank you for for all of your work.
Okay, thanks, Max. Good to hear your voice. Anyone else in the public queue?
Looking for any additional raised hands or any emailed public comments? And there's no further public comment.
Okay. Well, with that, and again, this is a workshop, so let's just kind of bring it back to the council for any any further discussion, suggestions about how to proceed from any of us. I have some thoughts, but if anyone else wants to jump in first.
I have a question for maybe it's Neil Toft or our manager Schwartz, but it looks like this that from what I'm hearing, that the majority of us are interested in a vision statement. This is an example that has been given to us. If we decide that we want to consider a vision statement, how do you see this going forward? Would you have the staff to be able to sort of look at this existing one and do the edits? Or are you expecting that we would ask the residents who submitted this to continue to do edits? What's your process thinking about that?
Well, I don't know that we have one yet, but.
I'm asking them if they.
I have a suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dan here. I think I think if we can ask the city manager or staff to tailor a motion that would allow staff to edit a forward-looking preface to the Climate Action Plan based on the discussion that we've had thus far. I would trust that to be adequate. And then we could move on to the Climate Action Plan itself.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Yeah, I think Councilmember Way had a question to staff, which was a valid question. I'd like to hear staff's answer as to their opinion about whether they're going to be the ones writing this or we should send this back to the public to to make edits. Because I think that's going to guide us as far as what kind of motion we need to make. So I would love to hear whether it's Neil or Dan or somebody on staff to to tell us, or do they feel equipped to to do this type of creating creative writing project? Or do they feel more comfortable sending it back to the public?
I appreciate Councilmember Candell's comment, but my my comment had actually to do with the direction that staff is equipped to do this and that the council should direct them to do so.
I agree with Scott. I'd like to hear that. I'd like my question to be answered. I also assume that they're equipped with it, but I want to give them the ability to give me that feedback.
Yeah, staff would be happy to write in a revised preface that's consistent with the discussion that the council has and bring it back for you to discuss again at a future meeting. That would be well within staff capability.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, may I come in?
No, please.
So so with that in mind, it sounds like, and I know, Gabe, we haven't heard from you yet, but it sounds like the the majority of the council feels that this is a good step forward. We would like it to be general, so we're not talking about specific plans, whether it's a library or a number of units or a specific e-bike company or or anything that's going to to show that we're favoring one unknown project over another. But that's kind of the direction we would like staff to take. Does that sound specific enough, Dan, or what exactly are you looking for from us?
That's pretty clear. I can work with that.
All right, Gabe, did you have any thoughts on that? I want to speak for you.
Yeah, I guess I'll go. That's fair, Mayor.
Oh, please.
Yeah, so I mean, I, you know, listening to the discussion, I think, you know, Catherine originally raised a good point. And that's, you know, what was words, I think, to me, really means that we ensure that this vision statement is aspirational and it's not confused with objectives. I think I got that feedback from staff already, but there could be some clarifications there. You know, we brought up, I think, the city climate center at the library and the nine hundred units. You know, I wouldn't want that to be perceived as an expectation where there might be some disappointment. I mean, the the goal really, I think, everybody on the council, we're all in full agree. You know, there is an emergency and we want to do something about it. I think languaging may really serve us if it if it's if it's edited. I'm happy with with, you know, the responses and, you know, ready to move if the rest of the council is.
I, Mr. Mayor, I don't.
Yeah.
It's up to you, but I can take this direction without emotion.
Yeah, and I was, again, this is a workshop. This is all just really an opportunity to provide input and feedback. I think that that you have a consensus on in terms of direction. You know, the Fairfax approach seemed like a good model to to look at and and use as guidance. But unless there's anything else, I think we've probably given you sufficient direction to take this to the next step in terms of drafting.
My suggestion to the council to wrap up is that staff will take this direction and will work on a new preface. I think the Fairfax location is a logical place to put the statement, which is right up front. But I don't think it prohibits you from tonight, if you want to adopt the Climate Action Plan. We can certainly, you could certainly do that tonight with the caveat that you want to add this preface statement.
Yes.
At the next meeting or a meeting after that. So as we transition to part B, and I'm going to then hand it over to yeah, Planning and Building Director Neil Toft to introduce. I don't think you should necessarily constrain yourself from whether you want to consider adopting the the plan itself tonight.
Yeah, and then thanks for that clarification, because that is a separate, that is a separate item. And there's a lot of work that's actually gone into the cap. And although we have an opportunity, I think, to still do some additional work in terms of a preface or a vision statement or whatever it is we decide to call it. I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of the cap itself. So unless there are further comments or questions on the issue of a vision statement or preface or whatever we want to call it, then direction to staff to take it to the next step, I think we're kind of done with that part. And would like to move on to seven point two B, which is actual consideration of the amended cap Climate Action Plan. Any objections to that? Can we move on?
It does appear, Mr. Mayor, that a member of the audience would like to comment.
You don't see that, but go ahead, go. Allison, can you help with that?
Yes, David Muller.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. In the spirit of this being a workshop, I just want to thank the council members and staff for for being very open-minded about doing some sort of forward-looking story like this. I think there's clear consensus that it could really help engage the community. And as staff does that that editing or or some rework on it, I just want to reiterate again, we'd be happy as the Larkspur Climate Group, and you heard Sue Hala say specifically, we'd be happy to to look at those, have any input. And we would hope we would have some opportunity to keep that spirit of it being an engaging and lively story. So thank you.
And I think that's a perspective we all share. And again, I mean, I think several of us already said, we just want to thank you and your group for the work that you've put into this overall effort, not just with respect to the vision statement, but also with respect to the comments that you provided on the cap. Everything has been very, very helpful and and well-received. So again, appreciation for your engagement on this and look forward to having Larkspur continue to play a leadership role on this topic. Anything else from the public with counsel?
There's no further raised hands.
In that case, I think we'll close the workshop part and we'll move on to seven point two B, which is the amended Climate Action Plan twenty thirty year cap. And this is an opportunity to have a continued public hearing and consider adopting Resolution forty-five twenty-one establishing the city's Climate Action Plan. This is continued from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And with that, I'll ask, staff has a report they would like to provide at this time.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Harof and members of the city council. I'll give a brief report. We did present the draft cap to you back in March and subsequently held a public workshop in April twenty ninth. We did prepare amendments to the cap draft and to address numerous comments we got both from that presentation and from the workshop. And the council held a public notice meeting last June sixteenth. And at that hearing, you received a bit of late mail and some comments from several members of the community. And some of that was suggesting some language and actions and modifications to actions to further clarify concerns from the community and to better address the GHG reduction goals. So in conclusion, you've talked about the vision statement that was requested during that during that meeting. And he did vote to continue the public hearing for staff to prepare some modifications in response to a number of comments about the text. And I won't go through all the changes, but what we did do is we expanded the introduction section, adding language recognizing the goal of reaching zero net greenhouse gas emissions. And so we're committing the city of Larkspur to revisit its Climate Action Plan and adjust it as necessary to meet state and federal climate goals as these, if these are accelerated. We've also committed the city to applying best practices in inventorying and encouraging residents to reduce consumption-based commission emissions as these techniques and practices become available to the city. Another item is we did amend the building appliance electrification programs to provide greater flexibility in the language. So the city could adopt these electrification requirements ahead of the identified timelines, if possible. And again, these are timelines that are established and working with other, the county and other communities in Marin through M C P. Couple other items, we did add a that the annual progress will be actively publicized. And we did amend the bicycling target for L C T two. That's a low-carbon transportation goal to increase targeted commute by bicycle mode share from one to two percent to a more ambitious goal of five to ten percent. As I did note, as it was noted by our consultant Christine, we can identify that ambitious goal, but because of the limits to our circulation system, the and the methodology for through the CAPCOA formula, it really doesn't change. We can't technically change our greenhouse gas emissions totals at this point. So but that is a goal that's identified and hopefully other can be achieved through other measures. So with that, I would just like to remind the council, these again are minimum goals based on kind of a practical application of measures and metrics to meet the overall reduction mandate. A lot of these rely on continued coordination and collaboration with other agencies in the county and certainly also on state and federal programs. So we recommend council, hear the presentation, take any further public comment and adopt the resolution. You can certainly continue this if you want to make further amendments. But as said, we could certainly come in and amend in the a preface statement at the at a later time.
Right. And and still proceed with adoption of the resolution tonight for the for the for the cap.
Yeah.
And I and I just, again, I want to appreciate all the hard work that Neil and others have put into this process for a long period of time and the responsiveness that our city staff has shown to comments from the public in in consideration of the general public interest. I think this is a, I think this is a good document and I'm hoping that the council will approve it tonight with the understanding that a preface or something along those lines can still be added at a later at a later date. And also appreciate the recognition that's explicit in the staff report that climate action is is a dynamic issue and our policy response to it also has to be a dynamic response. So although we're going to take, I hope, strong action with the cap tonight, you know, things change and we may have to come back and revisit things over time. I think the 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 various things that have happened with weather and climate over the course of the summer is a reminder that this is not something that ever gets set in stone. So with that, I'll shut up and open it up to the council for any comments. And I see Catherine Way.
Thank you for that presentation, Neil. I know you've received a lot of public feedback on this since it was originally presented and other times in which we've had opportunities to discuss this. So I know there's been a few additional public comments that have come in today. And it's always a work in progress, but I concur with Mayor Harof that we really we can always amend, but I think we need to continue to move forward. I know you've done a lot of, you and your staff have done a lot of work on this. So I'm very pleased of how you've incorporated the concerns that were expressed in our June sixteenth meeting by the public, and I'm very happy with this document as it is now. So I share Kevin's sentiments.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Seeing no hands raised. Let's see. Let's see if there's anyone in the public that wants to address this. And again, this is a focus on what's before us right now, which is the proposed climate action plan.
Our first comment will be David Moller.
Great. Thanks. Thanks so much. And again, I'm commenting on behalf of the Larkspur Climate Group. I just want to say how much we appreciate the council's focus and the staff's focus and work on the Climate Action Plan twenty thirty. This, I think, has just been a very, very positive process. We consider the cap to be a key tool to help the whole community achieve the greenhouse gas reductions needed to help mitigate our increasingly serious climate crisis. We really appreciate that council and staff, the way they reached out to the community for comment and the way those comments have been addressed or adopted to make it a much better document. We we realize this represents a lot of effort and we want to commend staff on a great job. So thank you very much. It's it's really important and some of your comments just now have reflected this that the cap be an active guidance document. It's it's not something to put on a shelf. It needs to be a dynamic, active document that's frequently referred to by the council, staff and the community. And we feel that the cap where it is right now is such a document. And we strongly support approval of the amended Climate Action Plan twenty thirty as as proposed.
Good. Great. Thank you very much for that. Anyone else in the public?
Kelly Jones.
Yeah, hi. I don't want to take much more of your time, but you know, to to just repeat what David Muller said. But I really want to thank you all. I know you put so much work into this and it's it's a difficult process, but it's such an important thing. And and the fact that the Larkspur staff and council has been willing to really be open and work with the public so well on this and really be forward looking and be reasonable but bold in their approach is makes me proud. So I just wanted to say that and to let you know you have support in the community also that's beyond just that particular community group. People appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. I think that's probably, yeah.
One question. Could could the staff clarify what is meant by the reference to quote inventorying residents in the phrase inventorying and encouraging residents as mentioned in the staff report and I think continued over into the text? So what is meant by inventorying residents? Thank you.
Would the mayor like me to?
Yeah, go ahead, Neil, please.
Yeah, one of the one of the reasons this came up is because the Climate Action Plan doesn't currently inventory or try to make an assessment of the consumption based GHG emissions. Those are GHG emissions that are really a result of lifestyle activities and choices that are very difficult to measure. You know, we can measure how much energy is being used in the commit within the community. We can measure water usage. There's a number of things we can measure. You know, get fuel consumption, et cetera, and how those translate to GHG emissions. But there's a number of things about food choices, travel, things like that, consumption based choices that are more difficult to measure. There are some organizations and there is some science that is working to be able to capture that in a more practical sense. But that's not there yet. We don't have that. So that's inventorying how we can kind of inventory what what is the consumption based GHG emissions in the community? And then further, how do we encourage reducing those through whether it's programs or outreach or other forms of encouragement? So that's kind of another the next step of addressing, you know, the the issue.
Thank you for that explanation. It's a qualitative aspect. It's hard to quantify some of these things. Anyone else in the public?
Sue Hala, second.
Hi, yes, I'm gonna keep this super short because it seems like a lot of people have said similar things. And I agree with David Muller and the statements that he had put out on behalf of the Larkspur Climate Group. I do want to thank city staff and Neil Toft and the consultants for putting this together. I agree that this is great just to be an active plan and looking forward to city council potentially moving this forward tonight.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email public comment. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, great. Well, then I'll let's bring it back to the council for any further discussion or questions and then a possible motion.
I would like to put forward a motion to adopt Resolution forty five slash twenty one establishing the city's climate action plan twenty thirty.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Paulson, did you want a second or you have a comment?
No, second.
Okay. Before we go, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion before we move on to a vote? Seeing none, let's go do that. Allison?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wayne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff? I'm I apologize, Vice Mayor Helmer?
Yes, good job, team. Good job, everybody.
Dan and I are easily confused. So yes, my votes, yes. And with that, the motion is passed. We now have an amended Climate Action Plan. Good work all the way around and we will look forward to to seeing what we can come up with in terms of a preface that we can add on at a later point. So again, thanks for everyone for their responsiveness, help and good work getting us to this point.
And the hard work begins.
Yeah, well, yeah, and hopefully we'll get some good results. It's a challenge. But anyway, thanks. Thanks to everyone and thanks to the public for their engagement on this. So with that, I think we will conclude seven point two B and move on to agenda item number eight, which are business items, and we have two of those. As I mentioned earlier, we have on the agenda tonight is a proposed declaration of a climate emergency and an opportunity to consider a request that we do that. So we have a quick staff report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. At your last meeting, you received a quest to consider declaring a climate emergency by resolution. And you received a draft resolution from resident David Muller on behalf of other residents. We staff was assigned the task of placing this on the agenda. We decided that the most expeditious way to deal with the analysis was to draw upon the work that's been done by some of our neighboring jurisdictions. So we looked at resolutions that were passed by Corredamadera, Fairfax, Nevada, San Inselmo and Tiburon. And so rather than try to establish the veracity of all the factual statements in the submitted resolution, since we generally found them consistent with elements of the other resolutions, we're working under the assumption that the statements are correct. And then we we reviewed the resolved statements for the council. And first off, I don't have occasion very often to tell the council that the resolution that I most admire was passed by our neighbors next door in Corredamadera, but it's very consistent with my writing style and legislative style. So I will fully acknowledge that and I'll make sure to tell their town manager tomorrow. With that said, with regard to the submitted resolution, there were four resolution statements that we identified for the council that you may want to give additional decorate direction or clarification or make modification. The four that are identified, if you look at the second resolved statement, it suggests that a progress report be done at least annually. The Climate Action Plan twenty thirty that you just adopted, which is your official policy, says that there will be an annual report. You don't have to modify the second resolved at least annually and your now adopted policy annually are consistent. But if you want them more frequently, you need to tell us that. The third resolved statement gets very specific about goals that have been adopted by the state of California. That's certainly fine. The council members know from working with me over the years, it's much more my preference not to cite law that specifically because law has a tendency to change. And so we tend to use more general statements. But again, we have passed resolutions with specific statements before. So if you want to keep that in there, it's certainly not a problem. And then the fifth resolved statement said that in the future, staff reports would consider the consistency with this resolution and with the Climate Action Plan. Not really a problem, but there's not a whole lot in this resolution that staff considers clarifying policy. So it's more aspirational or high high level policy. So we would suggest it just be consistent with the Climate Action Plan. I think anything we do under the Climate Action Plan is going to be consistent with this resolution. And then lastly, and this is probably one you do want to make some sort of modification. The sixth resolved statement talks about a biannual goal setting process. We don't actually have such a process. Our council does do strategic planning meetings. We do them at least once a year. We sometimes do them several times a year. However, I would note that you don't specifically identify issues that have to be on the agenda. You tend to defer to the mayor and the city manager to craft the agenda based on the issues of the day. And so it would be inconsistent with practice to specifically identify any one agenda item as always being on the strategic planning session agenda. So with that, Mr. Mayor, it's this is an item for you to decide if this is a resolution you want to pass and what you want that resolution to say, but turn it back to you.
Well, thank, thank, thank you for that. And and I think we're really pretty close in in having a consensus about proceeding. I do, I am mindful of the city manager's comments about how these things are written. And I think it's important for us to take that into account. And I know we have options in terms of the direction that we give to staff. But I think the one that I'm kind of hearing from the discussion so far that might be the most productive and consistent with our goals would be to direct staff to prepare a resolution based upon Corredamadera's or whatever other ones that seem most consistent with what we're doing with the cap and with our overall calls and objectives. So that would be my inclination, but I want to open it up to the council for other comments. Anyone on the council? I see Catherine.
Thank you for that discussion. I appreciate that you went or a staff was able to take four or five and compare them. And I read all of them and there's a lot of consistency, but I agree, I I prefer the Corredamadera that terms used in the Corredamadera Statement Resolution. Would it be helpful for the staff if we went through those six points to see how we feel about those? Or would that be something you could wordsmith later?
I can do it either way for the the council. I think if I hear enough direction in the conversation, I could probably do it myself. But if you want to go point by point, we can do that one too.
I think we should give give folks an opportunity to to say what they want on the individual points, but I don't think we need to make it overly formalistic. So Catherine, did you have anything specific you wanted to?
No, I I think I think the comments that the manager gave us are pretty consistent with how I would have edited it also. But I I think that this is an important statement that we need to do as well as how how we passed our Climate Action Plan tonight and listen to public feedback about that. I think the more we come forward with, I know Lars, I I know our tradition is to stay very local in our discussions about issues, but this is something that I think is an imperative that we continue to push forward with.
I think everyone will agree with that. So any anyone else on the council before we open it up to the public?
Councilmember Hallmer here after after Gabe.
Gabe, go first and then Dan.
Sure. Thank you. So I think my question will be, you know, for any of the public that want to offer comments, if they can clarify what we might be losing by going with the staff reports direction. For example, you know, an annual report to me seems, you know, given what we just went through with COVID and, you know, and bandwidth that that might be adequate. But if there's anything particularly that that's in the edits that that might be reducing effectiveness, I'd love to hear that. So thank you.
Okay, okay. Dan, it's your turn.
My observation was that during council member reports and comments tonight, most of the reports had to do with disaster preparedness, evacuation preparedness as a result of the risk of wildfire and the increased environmental risk of such. So I I don't think there's any gap in connecting the dot between that and what we're talking about now in terms of climate emergency because it's it's related in my opinion. I agree with the staff recommendations with respect to how we might edit in a a resolution. And I would appreciate, and I trust that they would be able to bring the the fit to this that we need to have right now.
Okay, that sounds good. Anyone else on the council? Scott?
We can. I'm comfortable with the direction.
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, unless there's anything else from the council, let's just open it up for some some public comment here.
Our first comment will come from David Moller.
Well, hello again. I'm sure you're not surprised to hear comments from me on again. And again, I'm representing the Larkspur Climate Group in this regard. So I want to start by first thanking the council and staff for supporting adoption of a climate emergency resolution. This was something that wasn't even, I think, on the council's horizon a couple of months ago. And here we are talking about adopting it with good support. We believe this is a real key step in recognizing the seriousness of our deepening climate emergency. And it's just great timing to consider adopting this in conjunction with the cap because they're really cap complementary documents with the resolution declaring the 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 need for action and the cap really laying out the actions to be taken. We have reviewed staff's comments on on the Climate Emergency Resolution Draft. And we provided in our written comments rather detailed responses to each of those. It's a little unclear to me from the discussion among the council members just now whether you're thinking, whether you're responding specifically to the four bulleted items that staff listed in their report or whether you're talking about a redraft of the entire C E R. So I want to address that just for a minute. The base document that the Climate Group started from was the Corredamadera C E R. That's why it looks so similar to it and why a lot of the language is the same. But the one we submitted to you folks benefits from looking at quite a few C E Rs and also seeing how these have played out in in actual application. Specific to the Corredamadera C E R, that was written in early twenty twenty. I talked to one of the council members just last night who was a key drafter of that. And so it's reflecting climate thinking and perspectives and awareness from more than a year ago. And as you all know, things have changed quite a bit in that year in with regard to understanding of climate impacts and what needs to be done in response. So I want to really caution the council and the staff of not taking a step backwards here just because it might be a little more familiar or more comfortable, but rather to adopt the changes that this draft, the Larkspur C E R reflects that is these year plus timeframe since the Corredamadera was written that brings in many new concepts. I'll have to say of the specific bulleted items that staff put in there, I don't think any of them are real game changers, but if staff was to go back But if staff was to go back and completely recraft the CER, I think there would be many very important concepts that would be lost. So I just want to caution about that, uh, as we've done in other things, if, if staff's, I, I think that would be really good for the council members to clarify what their direction is for staff on this. Uh, if, if there is going to be, uh, more extensive, uh, changes than just the, around those four bullet points. Uh, I think it's fair to say that the community would be interested in, in, you know, uh, having a voice in those. Uh, we really feel that the, the CER, uh, that you're looking at here. It really reflects, uh, the best thinking right now around these kinds of resolutions. We want to encourage that. It's a strong forward looking document that reflects that current thinking and awareness. Uh, I, it would be great if the council and staff would look at this. This is the CER that the community wants. We don't want a, a CER from a year and a half ago, three years ago, five years ago. This is, this is the kind of cutting edge that, that, that Larkspur should adopt. And just like the cap being more advanced than other jurisdictions caps, this will become the CER that's the model for other jurisdictions here in the county and beyond that are looking at it. So, uh, really hope, uh, to hear that clarification and, and, but again, in summary, really appreciate the council embracing the idea of adopting a resolution. It's a really important step. Thanks so much.
Great. Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan Helmer here. May I ask Mr. Mahler to clarify the delta that he's discussing?
So are, are you saying it, it, to go beyond?
Tell me what you want. Tell me what you want.
What, what I and the rest of the members of the Larkspur Climate Group is for the council to adopt the draft CER that we put in. But just, just as an example.
So just describe the delta between what is being proposed and what you want.
Okay. So Dan, I'm, I'm not quite sure of what's being proposed. If what's being proposed is to adopt the four bullet points identified by staff or to do a complete rewrite based on quarter Maderas. If that can be clarified, then I'll answer the delta.
I assume it is the four bullet points unless staff wants to clarify.
Uh, I mean, I guess I had assumed it was that, that, that as well, although maybe some language, uh, changes just to make it more consistent with the style that we would prefer.
All right.
Maybe, yeah, no, maybe our city manager can.
That's a, that's a question for staff. Maybe we can quicken this discussion.
Yeah. Cause I don't think, I don't, I don't think this, there's really, this shouldn't be that complicated.
I, I can't give you a good answer here, Mr. Mayor. We're in pretty uncharted territory where, uh, resolution has been submitted by a group of residents and it's a resolution for the council to adopt it to statement by the council. I, I can't, I can't do anything other than tell you it's your statement. At the end of the day, I appreciate what Mr. Muller is saying, but it's not the, it's not his statement. It's, it's your statement. You're going to adopt a resolution. The five of you have to agree it's what you want to say. And I, no, I actually didn't make any recommendation to you about anything other than to give me direction. So you could tell me you want the resolution to read more like one of the other towns. You could tell me you want the resolution to be exactly what Mr. Muller turned in. You can tell me you want it to be a combination of those things. And whatever you tell me to do, I'm going to draft that and bring it back to you. That's, that's what needs to happen.
Uh, through the mayor, I guess I'm going to go back to Mr. Mahler and ask him, uh, what the delta is, if he could describe this in a easy to understand form. We need to be able to discuss these things in the meeting.
Am I being asked to, to comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, okay, great. So, so I'm, I'm going to take the, the starting point for the delta, uh, being that basically the four points that staff has recommended and not a complete rewrite of the CER. Uh, it's very common actually for citizen groups to, uh, put, uh, CERs forward and propose that jurisdictions adopt. So the process is not unusual at all. Um, so, so just going through those very quickly. Uh, on the second resolved statement, uh, it, uh, we're just simply recommending that there be an annual update uh, that would address, uh, uh, progress on complying with the resolution as well as an annual progress report on the cap. Uh, the resolution goes much broader than the cap in its scope, and we think it would be helpful. Uh, so you know, if it, if it doesn't happen, that's, that's okay. We just thought it would be helpful to both the council and the community to know whether its actions are being consistent with the climate emergency resolution. Uh, on the sec, on the third resolved statement, so this is the second bullet point staff put together. Uh, as, uh, city manager Schwartz pointed out, we're proposing to have a little bit more specifics as to what the state and county goals are than, uh, Corredara just referred to the county goals almost by reference. Uh, if somebody's looking at this and trying to understand what the, uh, what the county or what the, uh, council is resolving to do. Uh, we think it's good to list what those goals are and not expect the reader to have to go chase down and see the specifics of those goals. Again, if, if it went to the quarter Madera example for that third resolved statement, it's not a huge loss. I would point out right now, the wording that we've put into this CER exactly matches the wording in the cap. So you might want to take a look at that. Uh, on the third bullet point, which goes to the fifth revolve statement. I'm sorry, resolve statement. The, the, the reason to have staff reports also at least consider consistency with the CER is because the CER has a much broader scope than the cap. So we've actually seen this play out in a Marin jurisdiction where there was a land use decision. And ultimately the council decided not to consider the climate impacts, uh, of this land use decision. Uh, the cap doesn't address the specific land use decision. And there's no requirement that we consider the broader, uh, climate concerns of our CER. So it sort of falls through a loophole and you don't have to consider it. That just seemed like it's been revealed that it's good to have the staff reports address consistency with the CER as well as the cap. And then on the, on the last bullet, uh, the sixth resolved statement, uh, the, the reference to, uh, the, the annual pa- planning process or any strategic planning meetings is fine. We have no problem with that. We do think it's important to establish this as a standing item, uh, for those, uh, strategic. Because increasingly climate issues are going to becoming the overriding issue. It would be pretty amazing to see a strategic planning meeting going forward that didn't even ask the question. Are we doing on climate? How are these things that we're considering related to climate? So we think it would make sense. Bottom line to, to your, your, uh, question, council member, uh, Helmer. You know, if, if you go, if you decide to go with all four of these items with staff, that's okay. We're, we're, these, we think there is a delta, but if it was a complete rewrite of the whole, uh, draft CER, we think, uh, there could be a very big delta involved with that. So I hope that helps.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just as a follow up question, I didn't hear in the staff's descriptions. An, an overall rewrite. I thought they were asking clarification on those resolved statements. And I, my question to you is, you mentioned that the climate emergency resolution, the scope is broader than the climate action plan. Please clarify that for me.
Sure. So, so what I'm talking about here is the fact that the climate action plan says there are specific greenhouse gas emission reduction goals that have been established. Uh, we've identified a bunch of actions to try and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to that level. And here are the actions and here's how we're going to implement it. So it's all about implementing those specific actions. The climate emergency resolution is more about, uh, clarifying the, the urgency of the climate, climate emergency and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna consider climate in, in the things that we do, everything, not just the actions listed in the cap, but in all the decisions that we make. And we're going to try and meet, uh, in this case, even an aspirational goal. We may not be able to, but it has an aspirational goal in there. And so it's not a list of specific actions. Those are all in the cap. This is how the council conducts itself basically relative to our climate emergency and consideration of climate impacts.
But you repeatedly mentioned the significance of consistency. And, um, well, just consistency. So I don't understand why there is not consistency between the climate emergency resolution and the cap.
Where, where there are specific numbers listed and goals listed, there's total consistency between them.
And the implementation of the cap relies on it carrying through as a filter through all the decisions that we, uh, have to make. I'm ju, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm hoping we can reach, uh, consensus at some point this evening on what it is we're trying to do and the consistency between our statements.
And, uh, and, and this is Kevin. I mean, my, my reading of the staff report is that o- o- overall, what we have for us, um, would accomplish the goals that we want to make. There are some clarifications in the specifically identified items in the staff report that I think are appropriate, um, and doesn't require wholesale, um, revision.
With annual, annual, annual updates.
Yeah, I mean, that, that we're already going to do that. So I don't, I don't see that's really, um, should be a, a big deal, but, um, maybe I'm missing something. Anyone else on the council want to, want to address these issues? Uh, Councilmember Paulson?
I think Scott had his hand up first.
I'm sorry. It's hard to keep track. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, I, you know, I, I just wanted to, uh, um, paraphrase what I'm understanding so far. I mean, you know, my, my own understanding was that the, um, emergency resolution, it's not, there's no need to rewrite it. And the four points is all that we're discussing. That's the delta. You know, to that, I would say, um, the third and the fourth to me, I, I, you know, would be interested in hearing, you know, not, not just David, but you know, the group he represents, because we're, I think, really trying to balance an obvious crisis, you know, that nobody's debating that. And, and it's really more of, uh, what's the cleanest and most consistent and community supported procedure. So, so that's, that's my intention in this question. So specifically, um, I, I feel a little bit like the vision statement was meant to inspire, but it wasn't, it wasn't a mandate. And, and I'm a little concerned that the emergency rest in the last comment, that the emergency resolution is seen as an expectation or something mandated or binding where the, the direction is very clear in the, in the, in the cap. And, you know, if we take out number three, and if we, in number four, commit to annual meetings as part of our strategic sessions where we commit to talking about the climate, I'm just, I, I again, I'm just, you know, trying to understand better what would be lost. You know, we did have this discussion offline, you know, we were, uh, there was an outreach to us, but you know, for the community's benefit, I really would appreciate, you know, a, a clear understanding of that.
Well, I'm sorry. Was that, was that a question, Gabe?
Yeah. Well, when we go back to public comment, I think right now you brought it back to the council. So I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to state, um, my understanding and, and I think we have, you know, six hands raised. So, you know, I'm sure that will continue and I just, I wanted to put out what my query was. So.
Okay, okay, good. All right. Um, any, anything else from the council? Cause I would like to kind of bring this to a, um, a, a conclusion before too long. Uh, Scott, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Um, I, I think that, uh, Dan was right on with his comments. Uh, I personally don't feel comfortable putting things in here as facts when we don't know their facts. Uh, just because some other county said, some other city says their facts, uh, that's not, you know, legit in my mind. Uh, I think the purpose of this, uh, is, uh, a declaration which I'm comfortable with. Uh, I think, uh, in making this more, uh, Larkspur-esque, as Dan was suggesting, uh, taking out the, uh, specifics that handcuff, handcuff us, uh, I think is what, uh, Gabe is getting to. I, I would agree with that. Uh, so I would, uh, agree or, uh, I, I, I would vote for a motion if somebody were to make it, uh, following the staff recommendation of making the modifications as requested by staff, uh, to make this more, uh, appropriate to our city. Uh, and, uh, the way that we, uh, carry on politics, uh, is a standard here.
Okay.
Um, I think that's a very reasonable approach. Thank you for putting that forward.
Okay. Um, well, we can, we can take it back. We've already had a lot of, uh, publican input on this at this point. But it sounds like I don't want to cut people off unnecessarily if there are others who, uh, wish to say something from the public on this item.
Our next speaker is Ken Jones.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Um, I am Ken Jones and I'm with 350 Marin. I'm part of the Larkspur Climate Group. And I live in Green Bay. And I just want to thank again the mayor, the council members and staff for all the time and focus on the issue of climate. Climate disasters are everywhere and ramping up fast. And it is time all cities, as you have done, to really get moving on actions to combat them and to slow them down. I strongly support the current wording of the climate emergency resolution and its specificity, even on its references to a possible need to adjust goals to a sooner timeframe updated by current science. Uh, as it states in the governor's July ninth press release after meeting with climate scientists. To meet the urgency of the climate crisis, Governor Newsom has requested the California Public Utilities Commission and the California Air Resources Board to accelerate California's progress toward its nation leading climate goals. At the governor's request, CARB will evaluate pathways for the state to achieve carbon neutrality by 2035 in advance of the 2045 target. And the CPUs, CPUC will work to establish a more ambitious greenhouse gas emissions target for electricity procurement by 2030, stepping up the state's pace in achieving zero carbon electricity. So it's clear that the cap might need adjusting as we go along and that the resolution's mention of the aspirational goal is not at all out of line with where the state is recognizing it needs to go. Uh, so I'm, I'm hoping that you can vote on, actually, I was hoping you could vote on this climate emergency resolution tonight so that it could be included with the cap that you just passed. Cause I think the two goes so nicely together in kind of making a statement that this is really an important document, this climate action plan that we just passed. It's, it's an emergency and sending that message out to Larkspur residents. So, um, that's just my thoughts.
Yep. Thank you, Ken. Anybody else in the public?
To Haley Sackon.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you again. Um, I agree with, um, the words of, uh, Ken just now. Um, I do want to acknowledge a few, um, I guess like not caveats, but like specific things in the CER. Um, and that is, um, the like kind of definition and the breadth of, of climate that is defined here. Um, and that is to include the impact, um, disproportionate impact on vulnerable communities as well. And while the cap mentioned that, it was not, um, it was not as definitive in that, uh, in that regards. So I think that is also, um, a unique perspective that the CER brings. And that is also one of the reasons why I believe some of the climate, like the Larkspur Climate Group, excuse me, um, believes so strongly in the version that we have presented. Um, the other portion of this is in the, um, that I would like to speak about is about the, um, um, the goal setting that we have been discussing. Um, sorry, my notes just went away. And, and, um, in that, um, I would like to also acknowledge that climate, um, climate issues are, are present in many more ways than, than just the. that climate, climate issues are, are present in many more ways than, than just the environmental issues, right? So here in the CER, we identify livability, health, safety as also forms of climate issues. And so that lens and that perspective be adopted into the goal setting of Larkspur. And in those, and in the proposed by annual ways as well, because we want to make sure that we are living in a, in a community that is, that is promoting those things. That's all I have tonight, and thank you very much. I would like, I urge city council, excuse me, to adopt the CER as is.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
James Holm.
Go ahead, James.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I support the idea of a policy resolution emphasizing the council's seriousness about climate. However, the dictionary definition of emergency, and I'm reading from Webster's New World Dictionary Second Collegiate Edition, is quote, "A sudden, comma, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate action." And down below it says, "Emergency refers to any sudden or unforeseen situation that requires immediate action." Climate change is not sudden and it's not unforeseen. Indeed, the entire climate action plan and the text of the proposed resolution itself is devoted to demonstrating how climate change is growing slowly and steadily and is fully being expected and anticipated. I realize that looming serious problems are sometimes termed emergencies from a sort of a cable news perspective, but that doesn't make it a real, true emergency like an earthquake or a, or a wildfire. Additionally, and very importantly, the purpose and effect of an emergency declaration as opposed to a policy, a policy resolution is to establish the legal prerequisites to bypass or short circuit standard procedures, processes, safeguards, or laws otherwise applicable. The climate action plan does not propose to do that, nor does the council propose to do that. And I'm not sure it's a good message to send, given the potential concerns with the exercise of emergency powers in various contexts. In some, without detracting from the seriousness of the climate issue, since the subject of the resolution doesn't meet the definition of emergency and since no procedural shortcuts are proposed, a declaration of emergency doesn't seem to be the correct approach. And perhaps a policy resolution emphasizing the council's resolve would be more appropriate and technically accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Anybody else in the public who hasn't spoken at this point?
Next comer is Laura Anderson.
Go ahead, Laura.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I've hung in here for two and a half hours, but I'm only going to take a minute. My name's Laura Anderson. Our family has lived in Baltimore Canyon for 18 years. And since we moved here, I've served in several leadership capacities in the community, but tonight I'm just here as a very engaged, concerned citizen. Earlier this week, I sent an email to all of you in full support of this climate emergency resolution. And I'm here tonight to underscore the importance of adopting the CER either as written or amended as is being discussed tonight. That's why you are paid the, the big bucks. This resolution reflects the urgency of climate change. And if adopted, will add Larkspur to the growing list of neighboring communities that know what's at stake and are ready and willing to do something about it. I applaud all of you and your prioritization of climate issues. It's been fascinating listening to this discussion tonight. And we're all lucky that you're our elected officials. I look forward to seeing how we as a community can all move forward together to combat these issues. Thank you for your time. It's nine oh six. I know you've got other things on the agenda. And thank you for your leadership on this issue and others.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in the public who has not spoken at this point?
Next is Max Perry.
Okay, Max.
Hello, Mayor Haroff and members of the council. Max Perry here on Mill Valley. For the last year and a half, Marilyn Price and I have joined with folks around the county to create a working group to work on CERs. And when we set out on our mission, we only had Fairfax who had passed a CER. And since then, four other Marin cities have joined Fairfax, along with the Golden Gate Bridge District and the County of Marin, the Board of Supervisors just passed a resolution last month. Sausalito and some other cities are hopefully going to follow suit very soon. And just north of us in Sonoma County, the Board of Supervisors and all nine cities, 100% of the cities in Sonoma County have as well. So you're in very good hands and it's very exciting to see this work happening. Once you pass it, that'll be majority of the 11 cities in Marin. So thank you for, for all of your work on this. I concur with David Moller's original comments. I think the proposed resolution is superior to, to some of the others that were recently passed. I think a lot of work has, has been done on this. And in every city's case, the resolutions have been slightly different to take into account both the council's direction as well as the residents who brought forward that resolution. Part of the reason why some jurisdictions have gone before others in Marin is, is that some of the advocates within that town have taken the lead. And so some of the cities that haven't yet passed resolutions, it's simply because the advocates who are working on this don't happen to live in that town. So in Larkspur, we're very lucky to have a very active group with the Larkspur Climate Group working on this. And that's why this has been presented to you, but it's been similar in some of the other jurisdictions as well with local groups. Very excited to, to see this work happening and appreciate your consideration of this proposal tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Max. Anyone else who has not spoken at this point? Tom Flynn?
Yes, I, I also want to express my tremendous appreciation to the council and staff. You've done a really extraordinary job and let's keep it moving forward in this direction. I, I really respect James Holm's opinion in, in every case. Whenever he speaks, it's thoughtful in his comments. But I want him to be aware that, in fact, we do have an emergency situation and there are many things that are very sudden and unexpected that are happening right now. And no one expected 122 degrees in Canada at this time. Scientists are describing phenomena which they've never seen before in, in, in the effect of fires and changing weather. These are sudden and unexpected and there is more and more potential all the time of sudden and unexpected worsening of these conditions. And we really have an emergency situation. I think the, you know, the setting aside, you know, normal procedures because of an emergency is not really what we're calling for here. And those usually have specific prescribed matters of what can be set aside. In this case, we, we, we really have a responsibility. And I think we're appropriately stepping up and recognizing that we have to do everything we can to prevent this from becoming a disaster of a nature that we've never seen before. So I urge you to proceed with the climate emergency resolution. And, you know, we've, we've given it our best shot in terms of our language. And we, we look forward to working with you further. You've been great, great compatriots in this effort. So thanks again.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anybody else in the public who has not yet spoken?
Marilyn Price.
Well, I just want to thank you again. I'm, I'm just so pleased again to hear your conversation and what you are supporting tonight. I just want to say as a part of this climate Marin, a climate emergency resolution committee, we are really, we really love the one that has been presented to Larkspur. And what we do is we used to pass the Fairfax around, then we passed the Corredin Madera around. Now we are passing the Larkspur one around that so much very careful consideration has been given to it by the committee and we are really pleased with this. And I just want to say I wholly agree. I read stuff all the time, every day. And in terms of this being an emergency, it truly is. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Tom Flynn said. So thank you for, for helping in the present situation we have.
Okay, next Marilyn. Anybody else in the public who has not spoken at this point?
We have a hand raised that continually goes up and down. So I'm just going to ask Nancy, if you'd like to provide public comment, you can unmute yourself now. All right. And she may not have comments.
Yeah, she stills me. Okay, good.
And I'm looking for any further raised hands or emailed comments. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, good. All right. Well, then let's, let's close the, the public comment on this item and return it back to the council for an opportunity to provide further comment among ourselves and provide staff direction or make a motion to adopt the pending submitted resolution with whatever adjustments people want to make. And I hear Dan Helmer first. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify my takeaway from the discussion was that the the only thing I can think of that would be desired would be the opportunity to have more frequent updates under certain, you know, conditions warrant. So I'd be happy to add that language. And I also want to express the message that this is about how we communicate our actions, our considerations to the community and the generations within the community. So I, I think we have to be very clear and forward looking with respect to how we want to talk about this with not just those of our generation, but those of the next generation. And I think it's really important that we be bold and kind of meet the challenge that they're expecting us to take on. And I think, I think the language in the documents that we create need to be reflective of that. So I'm interested in moving this forward. And if it's helpful to add language that as conditions warrant, we have more frequent updates than the annual updates. I think that would be worthwhile to, to offer. And I'm looking for a motion here. So I'd be happy to put one forward or ask for help in putting one forward.
If you'd like to make a motion, I think that'd be good, although I see we still have some hands raised.
I don't want to shortcut.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we're, we think we're done with the public conversation. I think we're back to the council. So let's see, Scott, let's Scott go ahead.
After Gabe, Gabe.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I mean, first and foremost, I really do want to thank, you know, the, the whole group and the community. And I, I, I think you know, the one thing that's clear tonight and Vice Mayor said it well is, you know, we're, we're prioritizing, this is important. I'm going back to staff's recommendations, maybe to help shape a motion here. I, I mentioned that I really only had issue, you know, to, you know, adopt the climate emergency resolution as written. The only issue I had was with points three and four. So after having heard the comment, I would say I retract point four, you know, the bi-annual goal setting process. Staff said we might just consider that commitment during our strategic session. I would say we do that. And then we have a second one. I mean, we've met in special meetings for the bike path and for, you know, other matters like the parklets. I consider climate to be extremely important. I wouldn't mind meeting twice. So as written, fine with me. My only friendly amendment would be to the point number three, I really would invite, you know, any of the community and staff and council as well to ensure the consistency of the climate action plan and the climate emergency resolution. If there are things covered in the climate emergency resolution that are not in the climate action plan, I would incorporate them in, into the climate action plan because that is our official guide policy. And I think it just sets up for better, you know, policy clarity and, and direction. So, you know, I, I would then, you know, just formulate that we move to accept the climate emergency resolution with the condition that it's, it's, you know, following the climate action plan. I'm not quite ready to do with the emergency resolution. I think those need to be brought into, into alignment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, it sounded like you were about to make a motion, but then didn't. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just want the, the discussion to continue because I think that that's what I would move, but I'd rather hear from Scott and perhaps Councilmember Way and yourself. So.
Okay, okay. Well, let's go to Scott.
Thank you. My take on this is that we are all in favor of this in, in concept. I think we all have little things that we disagree with or think need to be clarified. I think it's a mistake to try to do that right now because all five of us are going to chime in and it's, it's going to turn into a mess. I think the better direction would be to direct staff to make the minimal amendments and maybe talk to us individually offline and then give staff the authority to take our comments and to come up with a draft that they feel is appropriate. And then we can address it at the next meeting. You know, because I, I mean, I'm hearing Vice Mayor Helmer having some things that he'd like to address. Councilmember Paulson has certain things. I had some other things. And I just think it's, it's too messy to try to do it, you know, in the next five minutes.
I think that's a point well taken. Catherine, did you want to chime in here?
Um, I, I appreciate that. I don't know how long we need to belabor the point though. Because I think the climate emergency declaration philosophically, we all seem, we seem to agree on it to, to really spend a lot of time trying to craft the verb, the, the wordage for the specific declarations. I'm not sure it's as necessary as it needs to be. I think moving forward with a plan, with a conceptual, agreeable plan that we have agreed that this is really something that we know is an important part to put forward along with our climate action plan that we just adopted, I think takes priority. So I, I'm more interested in moving this forward rather than crafting a concise statement. So I would more be in support of the staff recommendation at this point.
Okay, so there's a couple of staff recommendations. Which one are you encouraging?
The one that our, our city manager put forward earlier, which was a comparison of our vision with the similar one that is in Corredin Madera with the, a small adaptation changes that were done in the few bullet points.
Okay, reflecting the conversation we've had.
Right. And I, I think our staff can reflect the conversation that we've had tonight because there really hasn't been a dramatic difference that in what I've heard other than a few nuances. And I appreciate the contribution from the community that is added to this conversation about how to reflect better Larkspur's vision of this in compare, as we referenced our preface to our, our action plan with our community vision statement. So.
And I will, I, I'll withdraw my comments and, and piggyback on those because I think that that would be appropriate. I would, I would be behind that if, if the council agreed.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with those comments made by Councilmembers Way and Kendall. Yeah. And I, I would also support the staff recommendation kind of in the short form of editing the, the. kind of in the short form of editing the, the bullet points cited earlier.
Okay. I think those, I think those comments are all, are all appropriate. In, in that light, I guess I'll go back to, to Dan Schwartz. I think we've kind of got at least a consensus among the council members that item number three and of the staff recommendations is where we want to go with the drafting to take into account the, the input that we've shared in the conversation we've had tonight. Is that sufficient direction for you to, to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one final suggestion, and that is that we exchange the word urgency for the word emergency.
So Mr. Mayor, I do think I got sufficient direction. I, as a matter of disclosure, I suspect I will end up taking Councilmember Candell's recommendation and talk to each of you. I, I don't know that I can truly meet all of your intent or desire without talking to you one-on-one, each of you. But that seems like an appropriate way for me to do it.
And that, and that's fine. And I think that's consistent with where we would be in this overall conversation. Because we don't think we need to take formal action tonight and instead allow that process to go forward so that we have work product that I think we're all comfortable with. So if that's sufficient for you, Dan Schwartz, to go forward, I think that, that probably all we really need to do tonight.
Now I have my directions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, any other, that this is a, a lengthy but helpful conversation. And I appreciate everybody's input to it. And I think the end result will benefit from the conversation we've had tonight and additional conversations we'll have in a connection with preparation of a, of a, of a resolution. So with that, I think we are concluded with that item. So that's item eight point one. And we'll move on to eight point two, which is continued consideration of the use disposition of the Sir Francis Drake statue.
So as I wait, because I know Director of Public Works and City Engineer Julian Skinner is going to join us for this conversation. And he's here. He was worried he might not make this because he had to go to the TAM meeting this evening. And I assured him I could cover this. And lo and behold, I think he's been with us for the better part of an hour. So the TAM meeting ended a while ago. So Julian, if you could come on too, well, this is your opportunity, council, to discuss what we should do with the Sir Francis Drake statue. As you know, it's in storage. And while our current host is not demanding that the statue be removed, we have a, a, a understanding that the council will come to some resolution on the, the long-term disposition of statues so that we can make plans. And you had asked us to bring it back at some point mid-year after we'd gotten through the budget process. So that's what we are doing this evening. And Julian was kind enough to sort of lay out some rough costs so that you could have that as part of your discussion.
Oh, good. Okay.
This evening. And we noted in our last conversation that, you know, there are other places in Larkspur that we own that could potentially be home to the statue. So you have a very rudimentary map that shows you where all the parks are located. And certainly if you want to discuss putting it in one of the parks, that's a conversation you could start this evening if you want to choose that option. And of course, one of your options available to you is to direct us to pursue the path that would result in us selling the statue. We would then have to revisit the agreement with the creator of the art, the artist, because he has some opportunity to weigh in with us on the disposition of the statue and potentially to buy it back from the city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it to the council unless Julian has anything to add.
Yeah, Julian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I don't really have too much to add to what City Manager said. We did do a cost analysis. Those numbers are presented in the staff report. Anything we do with the statue or the sculpture moving forward has two components to it. One is it's a fairly bulky statue and there is a cost associated with picking it up from where it's located and transporting it to its ultimate destination. And then with the assumption that if we were to locate the statue somewhere else in the city, the statue needs a pretty substantial foundation to be constructed. And so those are the two main components to, to the cost if we were to repurpose the statue elsewhere in the city. The transport, the pick and transport cost is approximately $15,000. So that would be the all-in cost if we were simply to pick it up and take it somewhere. If we decided it wanted to sit somewhere else on Larkspur property, then that's probably an additional $50,000, five zero thousand dollars to do the engineering that will be required to design and build a foundation for that statue. We did a pretty quick analysis of available sites for the statue. We didn't do anything as far as fit other than physically, where do we think there may be room to put the statue? Typically, our, our parks would be open space of sufficient size to accommodate the statue. And it's primarily the foundation is, size of the foundation is what's going to govern where it can go. You know, our, our, our streets are typically burdened with underground utilities that make citing a large foundation problematic. So there's very few street corridors that it could fit on. So we're primarily looking at one of the 12 parks plus a couple of spaces in town where we have old railroad right of way. We maybe have a bike path and then some areas on Magnolia where we have wide right of way. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thanks. Anyone on the council have any questions on the staff report?
So.
Catherine, go ahead.
I guess I'll start this conversation because I shepherd this last June and July when I was mayor. And I think we're at a crossroads of understanding what public art is versus what public expression for our historical references are. And last year, we made the decision to remove this, the, I called it a piece of art, but it took on a, a meaning of being representational of a particular period of history and time in which there was a lot of emotional contrast to. And the, the statue was defaced and it was vandalized. And it had potential to harm others. We had, we had evidence that there would be attempts to pull it down in a reference to trying to remove it. And I felt compelled to make sure that we had an adequate public safety mechanism so that no one would be injured in, in the removal of a piece of art that had taken on significance and meaning that it hadn't originally been intended to. So it continues, I think, in public concept to maintain its reference to a time and place in which people are offended by its messaging. And I don't feel comfortable returning it to its place. And I've thought about public art in many ways and that public art can often be transitional. Public art is often appropriated at the time and place in which it is installed. But it may take on different meanings as society moves through different phases. And I think we're at a phase now where this piece of art may have already taken on that, that moniker, that it can't be returned safely to our community. So I am concerned that if we return it to our community, it will continue to become an edifice for, for distrust and for emotional content. So I am not interested in returning it to Larkspur, but defining it a, a more a, a home in which its artistic efforts are appreciated, but not within the context of which it's taken on a meaning here. Laying that out there because I dealt with this last fall, last summer, and it, it became a lightning rod for a lot of conversation that I don't think, I think we need to move past and to recognize that our historical value needs to be more inclusive than one particular item. So that's where I stand on that.
Okay, and just for the sake of clarification, staff recommendations of give two alternatives. One is arrange for the sale of the statue in accordance with our ordinances or to explore a new public location for the statue, which I understand Catherine, you're not in favor of. So does that mean you would support the first of those two recommendations?
I would support the first of the two recommendations because I have come to realize that this a piece of, when I understood it to be a piece of art is taken on meaning to our community that's broader than that. But I do recognize that this artist has also worked in the Smithsonian. So there may be art historians and artists who are interested in purchasing a product like that. And I, I, I think we should pursue the opportunity for art historians and other art individuals to purchase this from us. So I, I would, in the staff report, I agree with number, the expectation number one, which would be to find a way in which we could have this piece of art removed from our community.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to get, get some clarification on that. Others on the council?
Mr. Mayor, Dan Hilmer here. I just want to make a clarification. Catherine, you use the word I quite a bit in your description of your experience in the last year. I just want to clarify that we all went through this. We all went through this together. And we all made the decisions together. So I just want that to be on the public record that this was a group decision.
Understood. I, I'm just reflecting on the decision-making that, that I, okay, understood. I experienced it in a little different way than that. But we did make the decision last year when we were asked to really reflect on what our, our concerns were for not only the public safety of a, a potential involvement in tearing down a structure, but in what it meant to the community as a whole. So I take your, I take your, your comments.
Okay, good. I see Councilmember Candell with his hand up.
Thank you, sir. We, we all obviously have our own personal experiences and just, just like Councilmember Way, my, I'll, I'll talk about my personal experiences, which is I was completely against taking the, the statue down in the first place philosophically. Because I don't believe that a bunch of thugs with pitchforks and torches should dictate what art is in our community. I think it should be a conversation that's had in this type of set, setting and we make the decision. So part of me was like, I want to put it back because I was against taking it down in the first place. However, the reality is where we are today, this statue is, the piece of art is too controversial. And I can't see ever putting it back up in Larkspur. So I think, you know, we've, we've done the right thing by letting it settle and so that we can make a rational decision. And at this point, I, I, I just don't see how we, we put it back up and, and cause all the divisiveness that, that was happening in our community last time we dealt with this. So I, I would agree with, with Catherine. I think at this point, we need to just move on and, and find a new home for it.
Okay, so again, just to clarify, not when you say find a new home.
Option number two, not a new home in the city of Larkspur, somebody who would take it for some private collection or some other use.
Okay, so that's option number one. Any other, any other comments from the council?
Dan Hilmer here. I would like to consider option number two, where we offer it to sell it back to the artist.
Yeah, do I get, do I have that wrong? You, you got it mixed up, I think a little. Option number two is explore a new public location for the statue.
My, my mistake. Option number one.
Yeah, and it could be a sale to whoever, the, the, the artist or the Smithsonian or.
Yeah, I would be inclined to offer it to the artist first.
And I, and I, maybe Dan Schwartz, you can clarify, do we have an obligation to do that?
I think Julian can chime in. He read the agreement more recently than me.
Yeah, so we do have an agreement with the artist that was signed when it was commissioned and, and installed. And it does give certain rights to the artist and to the city. And in this instance, it requires that we confer and discuss if we have proposed modifications to the statue, which obviously removing it and, and disposing of it, selling it would, would qualify as a modification. And so we're required to confer with the artist to discuss what that would look like. And then there are provisions in that agreement for if we don't come to an agreement with the artist on what we should do with the statue. There is a provision that allows the artist to buy the statue back, basically return the money that was paid to him in commissioning the art in return for him receiving the statue and deciding for himself what to do with it. So we'll, before, if you look at option one, it cites a Larkspur municipal code and, and what we do with sale of property. But before we actually go through that step, per the agreement, we would have a conversation with the artist.
Okay. It's kind of like a red or first refusal, sounds like, more than anything else. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Just one more comment. I think Dick Spotswood's article today in the Marin IJ was very reflective of where we imagine public spaces and public art and history going forward. And he reflects on, on a trip he's in New Mexico in which the community where he is vacationing recognizes the multicultural aspect of the community in which they are. And I, I think that's a really valuable takeaway from this is that moving forward, when we create spaces in which we create art and memorials or other places in which we talk about our history, we include the multi-dimensional and multicultural parts of where we are. And I think that's the takeaway I have from moving forward with this. And I would reflect everyone to maybe look at Dick Spotswood's column today as an example of how we can recognize the multiple cultures and communities that inhabit the spaces in the past and in the future and in the time in which we are currently living. So I hope when we have opportunities to put forward commemorations in public spaces that we engage in that conversation.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for that. Anyone else on the council before we open it up to public? Gabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I want to I appreciate you, you know, largely Councilmember Way for opening this and, you know, so aptly describing the dilemma. I, I just to, to play the other side a little bit, I also want to express some sense of grief and loss to those people who really do continue to see this as a piece of art and do not understand why it's offensive. I think, you know, the, there's genuinely, you know, from my communications with the community and from the letters and so forth. I really see people who are disappointed that, that, you know, what for them was, was, was art is no longer really allowed. But I do embrace moving forward. I think, you know, we, we've processed this. I think Marin stands for community. We stand for diversity. At least I, I believe the council does. And, and this may be the measure. So I'm, I'm in, in alignment with the other council members. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Seeing nothing, let's open it up to the public. Do we have any members of the public who would wish to comment on this item?
First comment will come from Hi, sorry, it's me again. I actually did not know this was on the agenda tonight, so I'm excited that I do get to speak up about this issue. I am a brown woman living in Larkspur, very uncommon, at least to the, to the normal eye that passes. The Sir Francis Drake statue is a representation that does harm to a lot of people. And that should not, in any question, be something that is in a public space. So I agree with council in this decision to not put this back up on any public space in Larkspur. And I urge the city of Larkspur to in non-hush, in a harsh way, at least for me, get rid of the statue. I do acknowledge that the artist may be in the room and with respect to the artist, this is something that does harm, as I said, to a lot of people. And we need to acknowledge that and we need to, as Councilmember Way had said, not do that again in public space through the form of art, through the form of how we organize space through the form of how we organize in general. So thank you for your time and I definitely urge city council to not put this back up in Larkspur. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else in the public queue?
Next will be Dinette Sebby.
Okay, Dinette.
Hi, thank you. Um, I spoke on this issue, I think it was earlier in the, was it the summer? When you were making the decision to remove it. And I had disagreed with that decision and I still do. The, the statue is not Sir Francis Drake, it is Don Quixote. And I've known that since childhood when that statue was first erected. So it was Don Quixote and I'm sad that the public doesn't understand that and that we can't get past this conversation of who this statue represents. But as far as censoring art, that I think bothers me deeply on the notion that it somehow is your job to make sure people are comfortable with art. Some art is intended to be provocative. Maplethorpe's Ex-Portfolio is not my favorite work of art, but I would never censor it. The film The Last Temptation of Christ created huge, huge protests all across the country. The hundreds of Christians came out in deeply offended by that film, but we did not censor it because we don't believe in censorship in this country. And there, that statue was erected as a, as a monument to a piece of literature that today is still regarded as one of the greatest pieces of literature ever written. And so it's, it's hard for me to see a town like Larkspur decide that somehow we have to censor art because it may be too controversial. And I agree with Spotswood. Diversity is not subtraction, it is addition. And there are things that Larkspur and other towns in Brin County can do to celebrate all the cultures that are represented in Marin. So anyway, it's late and I'm a little edgy, but thank you for letting me express my thoughts on this issue. And again, I'm deeply saddened that you, you seem to be leaning towards getting rid of it. But this was just all of you.
Yeah, thank you, Dinette. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the public?
Our next comment will come from Steve Dodge.
Steve?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for taking this on. It sounds like most of you are in favor of removing the statue. And so I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that and appreciate that you've all struggled with this. I, I also want to maybe push back a little bit against the idea that this is something that you're doing simply because it's controversial. I, I live in, as you know, I live in Canada. And although I vote in Larkspur, which is my last residence, here in Canada, there have been thousands of unmarked graves that have been revealed that indigenous people here knew existed all along. And there have been, and in the aftermath of that, there have been numerous attacks and red painting of symbols of colonialism. And this has been going on, you know, sort of the sort of taking down of symbols of colonialism is something that has been a political act of protest that goes back to South Africa. It's evident in Canada and it's evident in other parts of the Caribbean and all across the country. And moreover, it's in California where there was a genocide against the indigenous people. It really is shameful that we have a piece of public art which is distinct from a movie that you see in a private theater or a Maplethorpe photo that you see in a gallery where there's no context, there's no sort of sense of what it means. It's really just glorification of colonialism. And the artist-owned website, just to, you know, emphasize that this was brought up at the February meeting, Danny is wrong. The data artist-owned website actually says that it's Sir Francis Drake. And moreover, if you want to honor Don Quixote, you keep in mind, you know, the spirit of Don Quixote, that was a satirical model, novel, where basically the main character, Don Quixote, is a middle-aged nobleman who is so infatuated with the romantic stories of the past that he bumbles into all sorts of, you know, situations where he picks fights with people because he doesn't understand the situation that he's operating in. And this is exactly the situation that Anglo-Americans find themselves in today where they thought that this statue meant something. They thought it was just a simple symbol of, you know, that they've grown attached to this thing and they thought it was just some guy who had landed in California that they, that they were
So Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, to try to wrap things up here a little bit in the comments. It's okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's that's really all I have to say. I, I appreciate the, the work that you're doing and I just want to emphasize that this is a colonial symbol. It's not public, you know, it's public art, but it doesn't belong as public art. And pieces like this of public art are coming down all over the world, including in my home institution. We've done something with, with someone who's in the National Gallery. We removed a piece of artwork from our institution because it was
Appreciate those comments, Steve. If, if there's anything else, want to see if there's anybody else in the public and give them an opportunity to also speak.
Thank you. I believe I inadvertently lowered the hand of call 1402. I'd like to give you a chance to comment.
James Holmes, Larkspur. For the record, the, in Larkspur, the unmarked graves, indigenous graves were put there by other indigenous people. But the wisest course in, in dealing with art that is or, or an asset which is unique is to try, is try not to do anything irreversible. If you dispose of this artwork, you can never get it back. This statue was taken down, as you noted, under threat of vandalism and violence in the charged atmosphere last year in the wake of a paroxim of nationwide violence. That concern blessedly is subsiding now, both nationwide and locally, as witness the lessening controversy over renaming Sir Francis Drake. Given the changing circumstances and the strong possibility they may continue to be involved, to, to evolve, we should retain the artwork for as long as possible so as not to foreclose the opportunity of rebranding it and reinstalling it elsewhere, possibly at the proposed Larkspur Commons site as a council member once envisioned. I'm not aware of the circumstances under which the statue is being held, so I can't address those circumstances and what latitude they may be willing to provide. But I think we should apologetically seek their indulgence and understanding for as long as we can. Given the, the changing circumstances and viewpoints, perhaps we should have resort to Lord Melbourne's maxim, "When in doubt, do nothing." So I, I would urge the council not to act precipitously and if there is any more latitude whatsoever, I would continue to defer consideration of this as we see how public attitudes continue to evolve and perhaps tolerance for diverse art expands somewhat. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anybody else in the public?
Looking for any additional raise, hands or emails, public comments? And there is no further public comment.
Okay, good. Well, thanks to all who contributed tonight. We'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and direction to staff. Anyone want to add anything? I think
Hillmer, Hillmer here. I'll move, I'll move that we follow. Option one is presented in the staff recommendation.
Okay, so it's, so we have a motion. I'll take a second and then ask for any further comment before we vote.
I, I agree with that.
So you second?
Well, I don't think there's a result. This is just staff direction, so.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's fair enough. We don't need to mo.
I think actually on this case, we would like a vote.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. So Vice Miller, Hillmer, I think you did make a motion. Catherine Way has seconded that, so I agree it would be appropriate to have a vote. So why don't we go ahead and do a roll call?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hillmer?
Yes.
Mayor Hara?
Yes. So since we did have a motion, the motion is now passed and I think staff has sufficient direction.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to note for the official record that ad note in staff court will be following our municipal code section on the disposition of an asset. As the director Skinner noted, we will first follow the agreement parameters in terms of engaging the artist. There's also Civil Code Section 989 that talks about public art and we'll make sure that all the actions we take are also consistent with that state law.
And we will count on our city attorney to ensure that we're complying with all legal requirements that may apply. So I think we are now concluded with business item 8.2. Unless there's further discussion on that, we'll move to agenda item number nine, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
You, you both jumped on it. So we'll, we'll take Councilmember Paulson moved. Vice Mayor Hillmer seconded. And unless there's any objection, I will declare the meeting to be adjourned. And thank you all and have a good night.
Night, everyone.